Could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance, to the craft, the United States of America, to the Republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, created in the
Thank you, everyone, for attending. First order of business, opening comments. Commissioner Evans, do we have any opening comments for this evening?
We only have ten pages.
All right.
Welcome. Glad you could join us this evening. Our meetings are neutral ground, a place to hear and be heard. Just a reminder, your questions or statements regarding agenda items only will be entertained under Citizens to Be Heard. All other matters will be recognized at the end of the meeting during public comment. This week, we had two traffic accidents at the intersection of Lloyd and Manor Avenue. That's not good. Luckily, an updated traffic study of the intersection will be completed in the not-too-distant future. Since the original study, school buses, students, and parents have taken over the road behind Royal Farms to avoid the traffic late at Rock Raymond. Fingers crossed, the new study confirms how dangerous it has become for those attempting to turn left onto Lloyd, off of Lloyd, onto Manor. In the meantime, please be vigilant. Be careful. Take extra care if you're traveling through, as there is an incline on the Royal Farms approach to Manor that makes it difficult to gauge the speed of vehicles moving in that direction. My, uh, my wife's father used to say, "I'd rather be five minutes late than dead." Where was I? On the fifteenth, we had an excellent first zoning update workshop of 2024. I think we all came away happy to discover how much we'd accomplished in 2023 and convinced we'll get this over the finish line without too much pain. The task force meeting will continue to be held on the third Thursday of each month at 6:30. Open the public and in person right here or by way of Zoom. Get your calendars out. The Thorndale Fire Company will hold their annual blood drive Tuesday, April 2nd. So this is not the last time you're gonna hear this. It's from 1:00 to 6:00 at the Firehouse banquet hall. Come out and give until you're pale. Just kidding about the pale part, but not about giving generously. It's never too late to make a financial contribution to the volunteers who risk their lives for us. In fact, I just wrote a donation check today, and I left it on my desk, so I'll bring it over tomorrow. Interesting note, did you know that the north, on the northeast end of the old county meeting house property, there's a cemetery where African-American soldiers who fought in the Civil War are buried? Sadly, it's engraved disrepair, but the Old County Historical Society is working to restore as much of it as they can. Didn't I mention they're looking for more members? Contact me, I'll put you in touch with them. The Friends of Spackman Davis Farm 501(c)(3) nonprofit is now a reality. Their mission statement is to restore, protect, preserve, and promote the historic resources and cultural landscapes of Spackman Davis Farm through fundraising events, communication, and education. We look forward to working together with them to raise awareness of this beautiful gem that is the Spackman Davis Farm. And if you'll bear with me, I had one other thing here. Well, I can just say it, I guess it's on the top of my head. The board members are Richard Spackman, who is on the board at Longwood Gardens, Marion Griffiths, who is the last member of the family to live there and actually sold it to the township, Laura de Mateo, who is the former head of Historic Preservation at Chester County Planning Commission, and Dr. Laura Feller from Riordan Dental. And if you were at the tour, she's a philanthropist, she owns historic property in North Coventry, and she played Amanda Spackman. Speaking of Spackman Davis Farm, as soon as a few potential issues are worked out, fingers crossed, the Historical Commission plans to present a proposal for a historic picnic event at Spackman Davis Farm, featuring the longest picnic table in Chester County. On a side note, that roof is quickly deteriorating. Hopefully, we'll find some funds to replace it before the 1767 farmhouse is lost. And speaking of volunteers, Historical Commission has some big cool stuff going on this year, and there's only a couple of seats open, so please take a look at all we do and consider joining us. Remember, when we all work together, there's nothing we can't do. Spread kindness, everyone. Anger, grudges, and resentments are not worth our time or energy. Compassion, empathy, peace, and love, these are what make the world go around. Oh, there's the border directive.
Last place you look.
Yeah.
Commissioner Evans, thank you. All right, next on the agenda, we have citizens to be heard. I'm looking out here in the township building. Any citizens for agenda items? You do have a hand raised for agenda item?
Hi, Kathy.
Hi, Kathy.
Can you just?
Oh, sorry, guys. Sorry. Once again, I know our last meeting, I am, once again, gonna say I'm selfishly here, since I don't live right next to the Bonsville apartments to go in. And Mr. Rizben was kind enough to have a Zoom meeting last Wednesday, and some people were there. I think maybe some people had a hard time getting on. I was told the gentleman today, I stopped there because he was outside, that lives right in front of the proposed building. And I just said, "Hey, you know, there's a meeting tonight, just in case you don't know." He said, "I didn't know." And he said, "I can't be there tonight." I said, "Okay, well, I'm gonna be there tonight." He said, "I did know about the meeting. I found out someone knocked on the door, a neighbor next door knocked on the door about the meeting last, uh, last week, and they couldn't get on to the Zoom." So there was a lot of talk, a lot of good things, of course. Mr. Rizben, I know, can't wait to put this building there. I just wanted to say, too, that back in the minutes of May 25th, the Board of Commissioners meeting, Mr. Rizben said that they were gonna take the fourth story off to have 45 to 48, and that's in the minutes.
Yes, it is.
Okay. And but the other night, I, or I might have misunderstood, that it would be four stories and 57 units. So I was just curious what changed that with taking the fourth floor off to putting the fourth floor back again, because I was listening to the people that live there, and they were so concerned about lighting, and my heart just broke because the house is there. Even when I was at the gentleman's house today, it's a ranch-style, so if you're standing, you're almost as tall as the house, because it's a wonderful house, long, but low, and anything is gonna be kinda high. And Mr. Rizben was kind enough to tell them, there's gonna be trees and everything. But I really think the other level would make a difference coming off, even if you expanded, if you could go out and make it lower. And that's selfish of me, because I don't wanna look over from a star comb and look over at something that would look like a skyscraper, even though it's not a skyscraper. It will look like a skyscraper to these guys down here, because their homes are nice and long and low. Anyway, so I just wondered how that has changed from three levels, which two would be spectacular, but how did it go from three now back up to four? So just, that's all I wanna say. Like I said, I'm selfishly here.
No, no, Kathy, no, it's fine.
I'm getting texts from residents who say they can't hear.
Oh, sorry. Oh, my gosh.
Get right into that microphone.
Oh, sorry. And I know that you guys weren't the commissioners. I know Josh was. Josh knew how much, I think he's the great, greatest. And my dear friend Chuck, that was on the commission then, who I teased him at the time, because my husband would say, you know, "Choose your battles." We were trying to deal with other things, and I remember commenting on that. But, and I teased Chuck, I said, "Oh, Chuck, you're gonna move away, and, you know, and this is gonna be here, and it's not like, it's in a residential area. It's not like it's, you know, anywhere where there's other buildings like that." And I know, like I said, that, when that was, what, eight years ago now?
Yeah, the original plan was, what, 2011? And 2013 is when the other board had approved the original part of it. And it did come in front of our board, like you had mentioned back in May, where it was, you know, explained to us that they were gonna cut off that top floor. And I think things have changed since. And I know we're gonna get into this discussion a little bit later, so we can bring up that question for you at the time.
So I'm sorry. So I just wanted to, like I said, and I know that, like I said, the gentleman lives right there, wasn't able to come, and it's sad, you guys, because everybody here knows, if you don't want it near you, and I'm not saying anything's gonna be bad, and you just gotta, I couldn't do it to somebody else, or at least without hearing that. Anyway, thank you very much.
Thanks so much.
Kathy, thank you. And I know your question will be answered during our discussion. Thank you, Kathy. Any other folks here in the township building? If not, I'll reach out to Zoom. Any questions? Hands raised? All right. Next on the agenda, Township Solicitor. We have a few items. Oh, you wanna move him up right off, off the top? Okay.
Management system, Kristen.
Oh, there you go. Definitely. Use the mic. Why don't we do that one first, then?
Yeah, I can explain.
Yeah, she drafted the, Kristen drafted the agreements. So I thought, if the board had questions, she's probably the best person to answer any questions regarding contracts or agreements.
Right, so I can explain the background. So West Ocean Police Department sort of spearheaded an effort of a bunch of chiefs and police departments in Chester County to investigate and explore different record management systems. I think you have Metro Alert Now, is that correct?
Correct.
And Metro Alert, which is the record management system, is basically that company was sold, the entity that produced Metro Alert was sold, and the new company was deciding not to go forward with Metro Alert. So they're replacing it with a new software system, understanding that this group of police chiefs or representatives from each police department had a bunch of, basically, proposals come in from other companies, and they ended up deciding that the same company that operated Metro Alert is the one they'd like to move forward with. It offers the most bells and whistles and does, completes the services that they need the most. It also allows sharing of information between departments. So in the interest of economies of scale and working together, they negotiated a contract with the company, it's called Central Square Technologies LLC. The master agreement, I'll call, is between West Ocean and that company, and then the different police departments, Birmingham Township, County Township, Upper Euclid Township, North Coventry Township, and the Downingtown Borough are going to also have the ability to, through a user agreement or access and license agreement, tap into that software system and use it. So because it's an intergovernmental cooperation, the law requires that you adopt a resolution authorizing you to enter this intergovernmental agreement. The server for this software will be in West Ocean, but everybody has their own ability to connect in. If you have your, if your police department has problems with it, they do have the ability to go back directly to the company. They don't have to go through West Ocean to troubleshoot their problems. The payments will be made, though, to West Ocean. So West Ocean will collect all the money from the different participating municipalities and send it off to Central Square. So happy to answer any questions, but it really just was a way that they get a better deal if more municipalities join in. Chief, the chief in West Ocean also indicated that other municipalities in Chester County are sort of waiting to see how this works, and if they decide, you know, they hear from County or West Ocean that's working really well, they may wanna join in as well, which will further reduce the costs for each of the municipalities joining. So that's what it's about.
Commissioners, any questions? The, uh, the scale of the rate, I was trying to put that together. Could you just kinda outline that for us? Because there's an upfront cost.
Right, so the first year, because of the migration costs, I think, and also just getting it up and running, your first-year fee is higher, so you will be paying a user license of $4,997, and then your services for the first year is $42,557. And then in years two through five, it's much smaller, it's $10,463.
Was the $42,000 the total amount for the five years, or?
No, that was.
That was the upfront cost?
I think that's year one total cost. And it's paid in payments, it's paid in four different payments. Thirty percent at the outset, and another twenty at a certain, the master agreement calls out when the progress payments are due.
So for the five years, what's the total cost?
Uh, whatever, 42 plus 10, it's about 52.
Oh, okay.
And I think you said that if more townships come in, that can come down?
What do we, do we know what we're paying right now?
About $6,000 a year, and that's just reoccurring maintenance and licensing costs.
We want you to have what you need.
Well, the current system's about 20 years old.
Yeah.
And it's, Kristen alluded to the fact that it's been sold, it's been sold multiple times, and they didn't kill the system last year, but they told us they weren't gonna provide any updates.
Right.
And we constantly have to update it because state police, FBI, they have multiple requirements that we have to send data to, particularly the Uniform Crime Report, which constantly changes. There's, there's new sections added and taken out of the Crime Code and Vehicle Code. So the ability to not do that would, would cause serious problems for us. And taking this multi-agency approach, the cost savings in the first year is probably the ballpark of $20,000 to $30,000 if we just went ahead of it. And we also submitted an LSA grant last fall to cover, cover the cost of the first year, which includes data migration.
Forgot about that.
Yeah.
Commissioners, any other questions? Residents, any questions here in the township building? None at this time. Any in Zoom? Well, if there's no further questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2024-04, authorizing the township to enter into the intergovernmental cooperation agreement for the purchase of a record management system used by the police.
I'll move.
Moved. Moved by Commissioner Evans, seconded by Commissioner Kennedy. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Which is good, 5-0.
Okay. Next is, there's actually two different, two different agenda items. I'll try to explain the background in one. And I'm just really gonna look at Ms. Gerber's here representing the applicant Bonsville Road Realty Ventures. They own property at 415 Bonsville Road. That property is in your R4 medium-to-high-density district. This started in 2011. So in 2011, Mr. Rizben petitioned the Board of Commissioners to amend the zoning ordinance to allow within the R4 district a term that's called a senior independent living facility. So it's basically an apartment building, a multifamily apartment building that is restricted. The residents must be 55 years of age and older. The board at the time agreed to amend the ordinance, and then they allowed the use in that district by conditional use. Many, many conditional use hearings were held, and ultimately, in December of 2013, the Board of Commissioners approved a conditional use decision and order with a host of conditions. After getting the conditional use approval, which is the zoning approval, the applicant also had to go to the zoning hearing board, because some of the proposed construction happened within floodplains and riparian buffer. The applicant did go to the zoning hearing board, and in December of 2016, the zoning hearing board issued a decision granting special exceptions for encroachments within the flood hazard, as well as the riparian wetland buffer. The township did participate in that zoning hearing. There were very specific conditions that the Board of Commissioners requested that the zoning hearing board impose as conditions, and the zoning hearing board did impose those as conditions. In September of 2017, the applicant received preliminary land development approval for the senior independent living facility that was followed in June of 2018, where the board granted final land development approval. Nothing happened for quite some time. In May of last year, Mr. Rizben came back to the board and indicated that he wanted to pursue going forward with the development. At the time, he indicated, I think, that he had, and I don't wanna put words in his mouth, but I believe it was that he had somebody else who was going to partner with him, and they were looking to potentially reduce the height of the building and reduce the overall number of units. So that was a proposal that had been presented to the board in 2023. The board talked about it at, I believe, your June, uh, June 9th meeting in 2023. The board did not render a decision to extend the life of the plan. So just to put in context the two procedural legal questions, the, the way your zoning ordinance is written, when you have a conditional use approval, it says that your conditional use will expire if within, within one year of the decision, if the applicant does not obtain building permits to construct whatever was approved. That's not required by state law, that is something that your zoning ordinance imposes as a requirement. The other part that is imposed by state law is that when, when an applicant or developer receives preliminary land development approval, the law says that they have a period of five years from the date of preliminary plan approval to substantially complete the improvements on the plan. If they don't do that within that five-year timeframe, you have the ability to request or to require them to take the plan that was approved and bring it current to whatever ordinances were adopted after the five-year window expired. So basically, what the law says is, okay, you got your plan approved, you're allowed to rely upon the ordinances that were in place when you filed your plan, but you're, you're only given that five-year window to finish, substantially complete is really the words. The, the law does allow an applicant to come back to the governing body and request that you extend that timeframe for that five-year window. What that means for this plan, as far as I am aware, the only real significant ordinance that's changed is the stormwater management ordinance. So in 2022, you, along with every other municipality in Chester County, adopted a new stormwater ordinance that was mandated by the county, and that does have implications on this particular plan. As far as the conditional use, it's your discretion as to whether or not you want to allow them to continue or grant an extension of that one-year timeframe. Your ordinance just says, "Upon good, good cause shown." There's no case law that explains that anymore, it's a discretionary decision. The applicant is here with their counsel, they're gonna turn it over to them, but hopefully I answered Mrs. Callahan's question, that it was just a proposal at the time. I believe that the applicant is no longer pursuing that particular partnership, and now is wishing to go back to what the plan was approved at, which was the four-story building and the 57 units. So with that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Gerber.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Kristen, for the rundown as to the history of this particular project. My name is Gina Gerber. I'm here on behalf of the applicant Bonsville Realty Ventures LLC this evening. As you heard, Ms. Campbell, we did receive final plan approval for this in 2018. The most interesting thing, I think, this evening is that if you look at the final plan that was approved by this township back in 2018, the date of construction, intended construction was 2020, and we all have a general idea of what went on in 2020. So there was really no feasibility of this plan getting built at that time, as was intended when this was approved. The applicant is looking to move forward with this plan at this time, now that the COVID cloud has lifted and we are all moving on with our lives. This plan is still very viable, and we think that this plan is actually still very beneficial for this township. Associated with this approval is a requirement that the applicant pay $120,000 fee in lieu of open space and rec fee to this township, which is certainly a benefit for this township if this project moves forward. Additionally, as Ms. Campbell indicated, there is a stormwater ordinance change. I've talked with our engineer, and he can expound on this a little bit, but Kelly's here this evening. While we think what we can do with this is take a look at our plan and see in more detail how that plan does comply, because I know in a substantial part, the stormwater on this plan does, in fact, comply with your new ordinance. There are some differences between what your ordinance requires and what this plan is showing. We are willing to, with the assistance of your township engineer, do what we can to try and meet the purpose and the intent of that new 2022 stormwater ordinance with our current plan. I can't promise we're gonna be able to meet every letter of the law. There were some waivers that were granted with respect to the stormwater on the original plan that we are still going to have to pursue if we move forward with this plan, if you are generous enough to consider vesting this plan under the prior ordinances. But there are some concessions that we can make on our end to make sure that the stormwater that's being proposed on this site is as good as it possibly can be and match as closely as it can to you, to your new ordinance. So that is something that, you know, we're absolutely willing to do. Some of the other things that I think you might wanna know, is this plan is, in fact, compliant with the NPDES standards? That is still a permit that is required and is now been extended in order to meet the development of this property at this time, so that is compliant. We also are pursuing the four stories. So I know when you discussed this with Mr. Rizben earlier in 2023, he had proposed the idea of, you know, maybe we could take it down to three stories. That proposal is no longer in place. We are pursuing what was originally proposed, which is four stories, 57 units, approximately 15,397 square feet on the property. Now, I know Mr. Young is the only one that had the benefit of actually being there when this was approved back in 2018, but I can tell you that this project underwent some very strenuous review, particularly with respect to the fact that there is a tributary of a stream that goes through this project, and we know that that has posed challenges to neighboring properties. So what was actually proposed back in 2018 is a very robust culvert system, and there was a very robust stormwater system that was required to be put in, that met the ordinance at that time, but also went above and beyond that, only because of this particular property and where it's located. So we believe that if the plan is actually put into place on a property where there is no stormwater control at this point in time, it's actually gonna have a benefit in this area of the township, because it is going to control some of the runoff that is now passing through the property. It's going to be able to contain it, maintain it, and distribute it where it will have less impact to neighboring properties. So there is a benefit associated with allowing this project to go through for the neighboring properties. We did have an opportunity to host a virtual meeting back on the 21st with neighboring properties. The reason we did that is, honestly, it's been a while since these folks have seen this project, and I know that there have been some new owners in the township. The developer really wanted to make sure that everybody understood and that this project was very transparent. So we took an opportunity to host that meeting, and we did do it virtually, only because I've found, at least in my experience, and I can't speak for everyone, but the decision was made to host that virtually, so it would be more convenient for people to be able to jump on and participate. Unfortunately, I know that doesn't always work for anybody. I did provide my contact information in our notice of that meeting, should anybody wish to reach out to me. I know there was at least one gentleman who did directly call me, and we had a nice little conversation. So, you know, we've tried to be entirely transparent about this, and that is something that my client has insisted on throughout this entire process. During that neighbor meeting, I think that that conversation with those neighbors was actually quite helpful. We were able to give them an overview of the project again, as to what we're doing, what we're proposing. We shared our plan with them, just as we're doing this evening, and we just opened it up for questions. We just took questions as to fully explain the stormwater that was happening on the site, fully explain what was happening with the culvert that is proposed to be installed on the site. We did address questions as to lighting and abutting property owners. My client has offered to make some concessions on the landscaping plan and to try and work with those immediately abutting property owners to this site, some of which did participate in that meeting and expressed some concerns. You know, he's even volunteered to meet them out there on the site to talk about what their issues are and see what he can do in terms of landscaping to be able to help buffer and screen this use. So I can tell you that, you know, he understands that this is going to have an impact on neighboring properties. He's cognizant of that and is acknowledging that and addressing that, I think, in a very positive way. As far as the conditional use is concerned, the use that we've obtained conditional use for is a use that is permitted in this district. So to extend the conditional use in a situation like this is really not detrimental to the township, because it is the same conditions that would be imposed then that would be imposed now. So if we had to go back to the starting block and go through this again, there really would be no benefit to the township at this point. We would essentially be entitled to the same conditional use that we got previously, because the use is permitted legislatively on. We would essentially be entitled to the same conditional use that we got previously, because the use is permitted legislatively on this property. We would be able to show, as we did back then, that we are able to meet all the requirements to obtain the conditional use and would agree to pretty much all of the conditions that were imposed back when this was approved in two thousand and thirteen. That being said, the circumstances haven't changed from two thousand and thirteen, when the conditional use was approved, to this time when we're asking to actually move forward with the project. So I think in a sense of efficiency, both on the township side as well as the applicant's side, it makes sense to extend the conditional use in, in these particular circumstances. Um, I'm happy to have Mr. Kelly come up if the board would like to be introduced to the stormwater that is proposed on the site or talk about any of the engineering aspects of this. Or we're absolutely happy to talk about, um, you know, any questions or concerns the board may have. But essentially what we're looking forward, what we're looking forward to doing is starting this development as soon as the township is, you know, allowing us to do so. We're, you know, not looking to waste any further time on this.
We want to have Mr. Kelly?
Yeah, I wanted to ask, um, we haven't talked much about the green roof that they're going to be putting on now. Is this going to be on top of the fourth floor or is it going to be even higher?
It will be on the top of the roof of the building. So it, I don't believe it'll extend any higher than that. So the building is going to be four stories and on the very top of the building, you'll have that green roof aspect, which will help with the infiltration on the site and will help with the stormwater on the site.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. Hi Gina.
Hello, Mr. Evans.
So much has changed since two thousand and eighteen. Uh, one of my concerns is that the floodplain that was being looked at then probably expanded since then.
Has not.
It has not. We, we have recent, uh...
We did some digging on this, because this was a primary concern of mine as well, because of the floodplain encroachments that are being proposed and that were approved as part of the special exception. So the floodplain, the latest update to the floodplain occurred in two thousand and seventeen. Those floodplain changes were actually captured in the final plan that was approved by this township. So the most recent floodplain designation is included in the final land development plan that we're asking you to vest this evening.
And there's no other update on that floodplain?
There has not been any other update on that since two thousand and seventeen.
Because two thousand and eighteen is when we got hammered and then once again in twenty-one.
I understand that, but from a FEMA perspective, from a FEMA perspective, the floodplain designation has not changed since two thousand and seventeen in that area.
It's an every ten-year update, isn't it?
I don't have an answer for that.
Okay.
Sorry to interrupt.
No, no, no.
One of my good questions. Keep going.
What we're here for. From what I understand, uh, the thing that, uh, took this out of the realm of having to go to the zoning hearing board is that it got down to how much work had been completed and the substantial amount was. But my understanding is the, the work that was done was the majority of the stormwater. And I've got, you know, the residents, it's worse now. So that, I mean, I have big concerns about that. If you've done the majority of the stormwater remediation already and the gentleman behind you has got a lake running through his yard and...
So I can speak to that a little bit, and then I can turn it over to Vic to speak to the specifics about it. Um, one of the stormwater basins has been put in, one of the permanent stormwater basins has been put in. There is some additional stormwater that will go in if the project goes forward. So one of the permanent features has been put in the large basin for the rear of the site. You can actually see it in light green, upper left-hand corner of that plan. So that's the basin that has been put in.
Your zoning ordinance section on special exceptions and variances says you just have to start, start the work for which you got the zoning relief. The conditional use is you have to get a building permit for it. So it's two different standards. So at the zoning hearing board, the reason why they withdrew their application seeking the extension was because they, Gina was new to the project. John Deros had helped Mr. Rizben. When Gina got involved and started to dig more about what actually had been done when they brought the fill pile, she realized and was educated by, by Vic and Mr. Rizben that they actually did complete the construction of one of the basins. They didn't have to substantially complete the project. They just had to start construction on something for which they got zoning relief for. And they were able to show Mr., um, myself and Mr. Stackhouse that that actually had happened. But so just one of the basins, is it? Is there, would you say, and maybe it's a Vic Kelly question, are there, is there substantial more stormwater management that will then, the neighbors will see a vast improvement?
Well, first of all, the green roof will reduce the runoff for that area. This essentially was padded. Uh, the area was padded, you know, in the yellow section or the northern section, which is where the building is, under the parking lot. The improvements to the stream, which is shown on the, on the right side of the screen, uh, in blue, is the stream improvement. So the culvert is where our driveway crosses that stream. And the channel from the culvert out to Bonsville Road is being greatly improved to channelize the water, which right now, if it does slide, it doesn't stay in that, that tributary. It goes over and through the back of the neighbor's property. So a lot of that will be funneled at least up to the, to the east on that, for, for that section of creek. Beyond the, beyond the, uh, culvert there, it's going to stay its natural state as it is now.
So, and that culvert, I think, is, is that by the, you have a bridge there?
The bridge is the culvert, yes.
Right.
You'll see right in the center of the plan, there is a gray area, which is parking.
Yeah, I've got it. I've got it here.
To the very right of that large parking area going down toward the end of the driver, you'll see the, the creek in blue. And then there's that, um, kind of darker gray that crosses over the creek. That's, that's the bridge and that's the culvert that's in question.
And it's substantially bigger than the, the culvert that goes under Bonsville Road. The culvert under Bonsville Road is something somewhere along four feet by six feet, uh, in, in, in area. Culvert that we're putting in is twenty-two feet long and I, I think it's five or six feet high. So it's substantially, uh, conveys much more water than, than the one under Bonsville Road.
Now, I'll ask the stupid question. What happens to it on the, on the east, east end of it?
Well, then it goes back to the existing stream bed. Um, and really, I think what, what that, where some of the flooding occurs is you start to get into the tailwater or the backwater from Beaver Creek there, which that's where you're getting the impact of where this small tributary goes into that area. And when that area floods, that's the whole watershed of Beaver Creek. So we have very, very little impact on that.
Should we, let's say for a minute we don't move forward and you have to come up to twenty, uh, twenty-four standards, what, what does that look like?
You know, I think the, we, we've seen, I think you adopted the general Chester, uh, Chester County Water Authority. There, there are just little nuances in, in the way things are modeled. Um, we looked through it briefly. We didn't really dig in until you do some of the actual calculations. We won't know for sure, but we should certainly be the intent of all that. There may be, uh, originally when we did this, we needed to get waivers, because we don't have any infiltration on the site. So that hasn't changed. We still won't have any infiltration on the site. That's why we've got the amended soils in the, in the detention base, and we've got the green roof to try to compensate for that. So those are going to be the same. There may be some updates in how that's, how that's modeled. Uh, I think there was a, one provision in the new code that looks at the two-year versus the one-year pre-development to post-development. So little nuances like that, we won't know those results until we run it. But if we can work with the township engineer, we kind of identify what can we do to improve in certain areas or does it mean it currently?
Questions? No. Commissioners?
One of the other things I want to know, thank you Commissioner Evans for bringing this up, is, um, in terms of, you know, what's kind of been done on the site. So we've talked a little bit about the permanent basin that was put in. There's also been quite a bit of fill and grading that's happened on the site. The building pad is actually compacted down and ready to go. And in addition to that, seventy-five percent of the EDUs, sewer EDUs that are required for this property have been reserved and paid for. So I, I just want you to take away from that, that the client hasn't necessarily just been sitting on his hands since he got his land development approval. The intention was to move forward with this project from the beginning. Unfortunately, you know, COVID hit and it kind of upturned all of our lives and had quite an impact on the economy as well as development. Mr. Rizben, that builds this?
Yes. Uh, well, um, it's going to be a joint venture with myself and a company out of Philadelphia who does, uh, this exact type thing.
And I believe Mr. Rizben, uh, is, will be doing the landscaping, if I'm not mistaken, which is his bread and butter in the first place.
I'll be involved in all the site work.
And Mrs. Callahan mentioned that one of the impacted neighbors was not able to join in your meeting, and I know that you've been gracious to try to do the neighbor meeting, so maybe you could knock on his door and have another conversation?
I'm happy to speak with anybody who wants to. I, I said that last Wednesday night, and I think a few of the neighboring, uh, I'm sorry. I have a big mouth, so I thought everybody'd hear me. Um, I'm, I'm more than happy to meet with any of the neighboring, uh, uh, properties and go over some stuff. I've already, um, spoke to a few of them at the Zoom meeting last Wednesday, where I'm more than happy to help with screening or anything in that, in that manner.
Well, could you, uh, just kind of respond to Ms. Callahan's, uh, original question, the reasoning why you decided to go from the cutting off the top floor back to the original plan?
I'm more than happy to respond to that, because that, that could actually still happen. It could still be three stories. But it's sort of the cart before the horse thing. We, we haven't gotten into the architectural aspect of it yet, because it's extremely expensive and why would you do architectural work on something that you don't have final approval for? So it's something that, that can absolutely happen. I don't want to pigeonhole myself into changing what I have approved if, if I, does that make sense to you? Yeah.
Ms. Callahan, you had your hand raised back there if you want to come up to the mic. A little closer to that mic this time.
Oh my gosh, Kathy Callahan, nine thirty-one Bonsville Road. Sorry, guys.
Thank you.
Um, since I was part of the meeting the other night and Mr. Rizben was wonderful, and he did say he would meet with anyone. He was wonderful. But here's the thing, the only people that were, I, I believe that were even asked to be on, that were people that were here, uh, at the meeting, at the planning, at zoning meeting before, and we gave the, um, young lady our names and email. So I don't believe a lot of people around there knew about it. And then Ms. Gerber, the night of the meeting, said to everyone, well, it's pretty much a done deal, so... You know, and I said, well, isn't there still a meeting on Thursday? But everybody thought it was a done deal. I didn't think that it was a done deal, or like I said, but... And Mr. Rizben is absolutely honest as can be. He told everybody he would talk to them. But that was everybody that was on, there weren't, weren't a lot of people on the Zoom, and people couldn't get on. I know that. And even the people, especially the people right there in the front. Like I said, it's, um, I, I, maybe I don't know enough. It's very disheartening when I hear, what's a done deal? And that's just the way, the way it is. Like I said, Mr. Rizben never said that.
Well, we're still talking about it. We're not a done deal yet.
Right, right, right. So, but I think that's why...
It does look like we do have a handful of folks online.
But I think that's why people didn't show up. And like I said, I am selfishly here, trying to talk for them, because I'm selfishly here.
That's right. Selfless. Yes, selfless. Thank you, Kathy.
If I may, just for a second. I, I'm sorry. I'd never said it was a done deal, and I'm a little bit offended by that comment, quite frankly. One of the residents asked, so isn't this a done deal? That was the, that was the question from the resident at the meeting that night, and the response was this plan is an approved plan. It needs to be, the vesting needs to be extended. We're going before the Board of Commissioners with that request in mind. That was the response. So to the extent that that is not what's being represented tonight, I am a little offended by that. Um, the other part of this is the notices for that meeting did go out to all of those folks that were on a list that received the notices for the zoning hearing board hearing. So within, I think it was a five-hundred-foot radius, if I'm not mistaken, I actually got that list to send the notices from the zoning hearing board solicitor. So it went to over sixty residents.
When was the zoning hearing board meeting?
It was December.
Of two thousand and twenty-three?
Yes.
Okay. So it, it, recent addresses. Okay, just confirm. Thank you.
So we really did make every effort that we possibly could to notify folks of this meeting. I put it on my letterhead. My contact information was there. It went out to those folks that did provide their email addresses at the hearing, and it went out electronically to them as well. So, you know, we're doing what we can. Um, we have heard some, some complaints from the neighbors. We heard it at the zoning hearing board hearing. We heard it again at the meeting that we held informally the other day. We are addressing those concerns, because a lot of them are speculation. A lot of these concerns that we're hearing our neighbors saying, well, you know, there's a lot of stormwater, there's a lot of flooding, and this is what I'm experiencing on our property. The scenario is, we can say that to some of those property owners, they are upstream. So anything that's happening on this property is not going to affect properties that are upstream from this particular property. They are suffering from a general flooding and lack of stormwater management in areas of the township, not directly related to this particular property. And, you know, we've tried to explain that as best we can, and I think a number of those neighbors understand that. I, you know, we've, we've done our best to try and explain a very complicated, you know, equation on stormwater as to what's affected and what's not affected. But I can tell you that the stormwater that is required on this particular property went above and beyond when it was approved back in two thousand and eighteen. This wasn't just a, like, barely meets the minimum requirement. It's a very robust system that's on here.
There was also a lot of waivers pertaining to the stormwater.
Absolutely.
So I, I am concerned about that.
And I'm sure Mr. Kelly can speak to those, but I know a lot of those were, um, with regard to the infiltration, as he mentioned earlier. There's a lot of properties in this township that just don't infiltrate. And your stormwater ordinance contemplates some part of infiltration, and if you can't do it, you got to figure out how to make it work, and I think that this plan does.
Thank you, Gina. I did have a few questions for it. I head over to the Zoom if, if we're done here with the township folks, but... Just one? Okay. Here it says, the applicant did not agree to a hundred percent of the residents in the unit to be fifty-five years and older. Um, I, I thought this was going to be a senior?
Under the Fair Housing Act, as long as eight, I think it's eighty percent of the residents have to be restricted to fifty-five and over. So they're complying with the federal law to restrict... There, what the law basically says is that it's not discriminatory, it's not a discriminatory housing practice to restrict the age to fifty-five and over. But it does allow them, as long as eighty percent of the units are restricted to fifty-five and over.
Eight, eight-zero, eighty percent?
Eighty percent.
Okay. Thank you. There is a nine-acre parcel, the Edge Parcel, that you were proposing to purchase and, uh, offer to the township in lieu of, uh, open space. Has that been purchased?
The township would not accept that as the means to satisfy the open space requirement, so that was rejected.
Okay, when, when was that rejected?
That was part of the plan approval process. So as part of the plan approval process, they had, he had requested that that serve as his fee in lieu of open space. And the township said, no, we don't, we don't want that. And so instead, as Ms. Gerber indicated, the plan approval requires them to pay a fee in lieu of open space.
Okay.
Yeah, that's where that one hundred and twenty thousand dollar payment generated.
I, I've read that also, and that, I just didn't understand why we're getting both.
You're not.
That explains that. So we're not.
They didn't want it. They didn't feel that it was an appropriate piece of land to be used for recreation.
The, uh... Explain to me this, the only access to Edge Parcel, I guess, since you're not purchasing that, we don't have to worry about the entrance off of the east, eastbound on ramp from thirty bypass, so that next is that. Walking trails, was that part of the Edge's parcel as well?
I think there was conversation when he was proposing that the township, um, utilized that as open space. We would say, would we put trails there? And I think it was just concluded that this wasn't an appropriate place.
Okay. Privacy, uh, privacy fence, I think, I believe that came up from... Privacy, privacy fence, I think, I believe that came up from several of the residents. And were you willing to do that? Was that along the entrance? Is that where the privacy?
Yeah, we're willing, able, and it is on the approved plan on the south side of the entrance going in all the way up to roughly where the stream is.
And then, and then with the other affected homeowners, we are willing to do evergreen buffering as well, wherever we can put it.
So that's over and above what's on the plan?
Yes. That was part of the conversation Wednesday night.
Okay, the resident that's right in front of this property here, were they attending a meeting recently? No? They couldn't make it? My only concern is I know they have a pool there and of course a privacy for a pool. What type of privacy would would you install along the parking lot?
I'm I'm happy to do some like evergreen screening type type of. Buffering, I think there is, yeah, yeah, there is actually there. And that gentleman bought the property after we we had the final approvals.
Well, anybody that would live there, yeah, would have had that pool. The, even though the building itself is set back, as far as eyesight, line of eyesight, coming from say the top floor, if you have the fourth floor apartment, are you going to be able to see that pool? And I'm only bringing this up because, you know. People want to go swimming without being eyeballed.
Sure, I I I don't believe so with the with the the screening that we have there. But when we keep talking about the height of this, the average height of a of a residential home is about thirty five foot. So this is about, this is less than fifteen foot higher than that. So it's not like we are building a skyscraper, as mentioned. So this is actually a very small footprint of a building as well. It's only fifteen thousand square foot.
And it was noted Thorne Dale Fire Company does not have a ladder truck. Do we at this time? They would reach four, four stories?
We do.
It's it's required to be sprinkled, so we're, I think.
I just highlighted a lot.
All good questions so far.
I'm trying, I'm trying. I I I tried to think of what residents would be asking, you know, that's that's my angle here. So if I'm, if I'm able to ask the questions, everybody can understand it. Green roof was already brought up. Traffic impact, I I am concerned about that. The original traffic study was done in twenty twelve, twelve years ago. There's a lot more traffic going on. Would this be done again? Would the traffic study be performed? What would be required?
If you required them to go back through conditional use process, I guess they would have to update the traffic study.
Because I know there's a lot more traffic coming up and down three forty at this point from twelve years ago.
Yeah, I believe Andy Heimer.
Because the plan was approved in eighteen.
Okay, I'm just reading this from twenty twelve, maybe I'm just not up to date here.
During the land development, they might have had to update it, I don't know. During the conditional use process, they probably had one, but during land development, they probably had to have a more robust one done. So that was probably utilized in the land development plan approval. So we're looking about twenty sixteen versus today.
Well, I can, I can speak to this quickly. So we, two of our permits that we had were Penn dot permits that that ran out. So separate from the township, we had to reapply for those permits as well. And Mr. Heimer had to redo traffic impact and it it fell within the same parameters.
Okay, so no need for turning lane?
We wouldn't have gotten the Penn dot, we and and we did receive both Penn dot permits.
That was twenty nineteen?
No, that was just recently, that was, I want to say twenty twenty three. I mean, it definitely was twenty twenty two, so I'm pretty sure it was twenty twenty three. And and to answer your questions earlier, about eighty percent and 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 Ms. Camp answered it obviously very well. But but we, that is the targeted goal that we're looking for. We've, we've been to many meetings, Chester County Commerce Meetings and Economic Impact Meetings, and there is a great need for fifty five and older housing in Chester County.
The. I don't know if there's really an answer for this, but one of the residents during the twenty twelve, twenty thirteen, just the character of the neighborhood was brought up. You know, we we have single family homes and all of a sudden we have large apartment complex. How would you answer that for the residents?
I would say that there are apartment complexes within a half mile of this of this project. If you, if, as the crow flies, even probably closer off of Geo Carlson Road. There's there's a very, very large apartment complex to my knowledge. So it's.
You mean Park Drive area?
Yes.
Yeah, that's back in the corner. This, of course, is right down our main street strip of.
And I also, part of the conditional use, what we went through was the discussion that it's kind of a transition zone between the lower density residential all the way up to the bypass. Obviously, the bypass is your major thoroughfare. And you've got some of the commercial, you've got a restaurant across the street, Turkey Hill, first Atlanta, but I always get Turkey Hill. You've got the vet, you've got other more high density, and this is where the high density zoning for the township exists. So that's in the R four, that's the highest density in the residential.
Wasn't that changed originally for this development?
The district wasn't changed, the use was introduced, but the higher density residential was already permitted in the R four district.
It was, okay.
The zoning designation of this property has not changed. So allowing this use in the R four was what was changed.
And I believe conventional apartments were already permitted.
That's correct.
I think part of it was that the senior, we actually developed, they developed a term, senior independent. So it had to be the fifty five and over. And part of the push for that was that I think the studies indicated that the traffic for and fifty five and over community was less than a typical multifamily. So that was part of what the board at the time was thought, okay, well, if we're going to allow it in this district, we want to have it be a lower traffic generator. And whether or not that still holds true today, I can't speak to that, but that was some of the thought process back in twenty thirteen.
Yeah, that was, and the impact at peak hours.
It it was.
Less, less peak trips for the older, over fifty five.
I do remember reading that.
I just have to say, I always, I always, I'm sixty five years old, sixty six, and, you know, I. Yeah, at fifty five, I was still driving back and forth.
I think the thought, though, guys, is that it's not the, it's not the seven to nine AM and it's not the four to six, but honestly, COVID, COVID changed that for everybody anyway. So that those peak hours really have changed, to be honest. I mean, it's just not the same, not the same. Anyway, you, I should have said, I should have said at the beginning, you you are under no obligation to make a decision tonight. I know that the applicant would really want you to, but if you wanted to take this under advisement, you you are absolutely permitted to do that. So I want to make sure you knew that.
Yeah, no, I I I felt it was a good time to just ask as many questions as we can. And I I know we're just going to regroup about this, so, but the more questions, the better. And and I know we had at least one hand raised in Zoom, three? Now we have three? Oh, we still have one here in the township building. Is it Dan? Dan, come on up. Name and address?
Our newest regular.
Hi, Dan, two seventeen Park Drive. I was lucky enough to also have been part of the Zoom meeting, but I'll admit I must have missed, or I was on Zoom for the December meeting, so I did not get a letter, but was thankfully shared by somebody online. So I snuck my way into it in essence, which I was glad to, it was very helpful. There was a lot of great information. But I also wanted to kind of state some of the things that I'd stay there, so it was also on the record here.
Okay, good.
Some of my questions were not, I'll come around to the stormwater. But I'll start with, my question was parking with with the the parking lot. And if nobody minds. I questioned, and and since nobody can see me pointing on it. This is like your parking lot and you got this here. I was concerned that at some point, because I know there's a thing of only like one point one lot per space. And my question was, at fifty five and older, if there are going to be fifty five and it's a couple that moves in here, most people have two cars and we love our cars. What's that going to do if if all of a sudden they realize that's not enough spaces to area that might help with stormwater to suddenly be changed? That question got pretty well answered and I understood, right? But I just wanted to, you know, say it's it's still kind of a thought there that in the future, will somebody. Try to change that, which would would affect lighting again for people who live there. I'm actually further down the way, so I'll admit a little, I have to deal with the apartment lighting instead. But it would, that that's not going to affect me, but it could affect how water is is affected there. My other point that I made was with the stormwater management, it's all based on a certain rule. But as stated, the the last FEMA thing was twenty seventeen and I've seen a lot of water in twenty eighteen, I've seen a lot of water in twenty nineteen and more water than I ever wanted to see in twenty twenty one. So any kind of shift, the the statement was, we're going to put it into an area for to, you know, to where it's supposed to go. But that area that you're you're feeding the water into is part of the problem. And this is really isn't just a comment for you guys, but also for the township, because if you walk that area, there is erosion to that creek. There is area that is probably settled and you're going to build up to a certain point and it's going to cause a certain run and that does flow down. And I am downstream, I believe. So it comes through my yard and we had a storm not that long and I was talking to the other people who are thinking of building not far from where I live. If you, if you haven't, go there during the storm. Look at how much water builds up in that area. Look at what you're doing, think, okay, it's not bad here, we're just going to feed this little bit in. But that little bit suddenly becomes a lot down in our way. The last storm was only three inches and they had to block off Park Drive right in front of my house, so people wouldn't drive down to Geo Carlson because of how bad it builds up there. It didn't enter the house with this three inch, but it got close up in the one corner of of our yard. The storm before that, which again was probably about two and a half, three inches, I saw sit between. Two eighteen and two nineteen, I saw the water then sit there and it's coming from somewhere. So it is just a concern and I will ask about it all the time and and I got some great answers on there and and I am. Pessimistically optimistic about it. So.
Well put.
You know, my my hope is that any action that you take is a positive reaction to. The area that it is. As Mrs. Callahan said, some of this is very selfish for me. I I do worry about my area, but I am also worried about the people who are going to be moving in there. Because once you're done, and though I know you'll always have the concern of the area, but once people are in there, it's really going to be them that is affected by it. And what kind of care will then be taken care of? Probably personal on second floor, third floor, not a problem, personal on first floor, different concerns. So, you know, I'm really concerned about that draining into Beaver Creek. And like I said, I just kind of wanted to state some of the things that were stated during that that meeting.
Appreciate it, Dan.
Thank you.
No other comments here in the township building? Oh, yes, we have one more hand raised. Name and address, please.
One Marshall Drive. Across the street from the entrance. And we have seen a lot of stormwater in the last couple of years that that I have not, I've been here almost thirty years, never seen it like it was.
Yeah, we can't hear you.
Haven't seen storms like we've seen in twenty and twenty one right to the entrance. I have some videos that I sent to the township. I don't know if if you guys have had the benefit of seeing those, I'd be happy to send them to you. But how far have you built up already? The base? You know?
From the the original ground?
Yeah, how many feet?
I think after we leveled the dirt, and I'm not, I'm not an engineer and we haven't done the exact calculus on that yet, so I'm going to give you a estimation, if that's okay? I think maybe three feet. Yeah.
Yep, can you hear me now?
That's great.
Okay.
That's great.
Yeah, I know when when we built our property, we had to have, you know, retaining on the property, so I was concerned just about that. Even the buildup, you could just see the house in front has kind of a moat when that happens.
Well, well, the level of the ground currently is not what it's going to be when the project is built. We had hauled the dirt in and we had it in a pyramidal form.
Right, I didn't see that.
Everything happened with, you know, the slowdown in COVID. And then the township had requested that we spread the dirt out. So what we did was we went and we got a permit, grading permit in twenty twenty, I believe, or twenty twenty one, I think it is. And we leveled it off, so to speak, but it's not at the final state. It's going to be lower because it's going to be spread more.
Okay, because I thought you have those, that amount plus the building.
No, no, it's, it's definitely going to be spread out throughout the site.
So for the traffic, is you say Penn dot, you did a new study in twenty three, is that available at the township if I request a copy of that?
I think that's public knowledge, yeah, it's Penn dot.
It's not as a township. He was, what he was saying was that he had to update his highway occupancy permit. So that was done through Penn dot and I don't believe the township was copied on that.
It's, I I believe it's public knowledge, though, I believe.
Public record, Penn dot's a public entity, so you, I mean, maybe you guys have it and would share with us.
Yeah, I I do not have a record of it.
Okay.
Do you need that for the township or you don't?
He just has to show us the highway occupancy permit. The actual permit issued.
And then the open space, I was going to ask the same question that you had, because I saw those two different things. Parking's a big concern. I just thought, are there additional parking spots for people that come to visit these apartments or just the one point one per? So I just wonder where people are going to park when they, when there's one, you know, they're all filled up. Can't really park out on Bonsville. And I don't know, can you share with us who the joint venture company is that you're working with or do you?
I prefer not to at this time, not trying, again, you know, I've been very transparent, but until this this is done, I don't want to jinx anything and or have any issues with with them.
I think that was all I had, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Actually, actually, I'm sorry. Mr. Kelly just reminded me, we we did meet with Mr. Stackhouse and Mr. Gill, the the company that that wants to to work with me on this project. So we did meet with staff, I want to say back in the summertime.
This is the second question on parking, so I just want to make sure we're all squared away on that. The parking is approved on the plan at the ratio that it was approved. This is going to be a self policing issue. If there are more cars for residents than parking spaces, then some of the residents are going to have to give up their car in order to live in the unit. It it can't go beyond the number of parking spaces that are on the site unless we come back to you and you amend the land development and we introduce additional impervious and put stormwater in there for it. I mean, you all know the process for that. It's not, if there's too many cars on the site, then something needs to happen in terms of the management of the site to to police that. So just so we're all clear on that.
And this will have, and this will have a management company on property.
Okay. And we still have somebody in Zoom that had their hand raised? Three? Welcome, Cheryl. Are you there? I don't think you're. You're not muted, Cheryl. Are you, are you there? Still nothing on our end. Anything? Still, we don't hear anything, Cheryl. You you want to go to the second person, Cheryl, if you can try to figure out what's going on there? Okay? Welcome Mark.
Hi, how everybody? I just want to kind of summarize on my own mind because there's a lot of issues discussed. But seems to be they're asking for floodplain exceptions, stormwater exceptions, parking basically exceptions, floodplain direct exceptions and we just paid a whole lot more tax dollars in the last year, the bill came today. And if we're creating something that's not going to be covered by stormwater, which are saying they can't solve on site and then just give us a hundred twenty thousand dollars and we don't have to have open space. Let's just ask world, you know? That's that's more than enough to to decline a application of this. Plus four people in the Stark District that, you know, lived there for years and now we're going to have a four-story apartment building, like the one gentleman said, looking down in the pool. You know, I mean, once it's out of place, it's out of place. And I know you're going to consider, you're not going to make a decision tonight, but I don't even know if I covered all the exceptions. I think I probably missed a few. Uh, should have taken notes instead of just listening, but but I mean, that's my basic question is, how many exceptions is too much? It's not, you know, it's it's too much. I mean, I'm sorry. So I'll leave it out there.
No, very good concerns. Thank you. And can you just state your name and address? Denise has that on the record.
For me?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Mark DeYoung, Twenty Beaver Run Road.
Okay, just, you know, policy.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I missed it. My fault.
That's all right. That's all right, Mark. Do we have someone else? Give Cheryl a try again here? You look like you're online Cheryl. Still nothing. Is it our end or her end? Yeah, Cheryl, we see your hand raised and it looks like your mic's okay, but we're just not hearing anything. Give Cheryl a shot if she got her up to panelists. Oh, okay, yeah, go to the next one. It's Brett, just the name and address.
Hi, this is Brett Klukin, three five two five Hazelwood Ave. Um, and I apologize if this was in the materials already, um, but could you talk a little bit more about the actual construction of the green roof, like how it will be planted, how what exactly it will entail and like, is this something that you're actually committed to as part of the design? Because it sounded like the architectural aspects of this or the design hasn't been finalized yet. So I'm trying to understand if this is something that you are committing to or have or ha- are committed to as part of the design that you have to have a green roof? Or it's something that you're just voluntarily saying that you'll put in? And then again, what exactly will it entail?
Right, excellent question.
Uh, yeah, I can do my best to answer that. It is an absolute requirement of the MPDS permit and there's a square footage amount noted on the plan. And there are details on the plan that identify uh some of the media requirements. Uh, typically it's like, I'm going to say sixteen inches, I don't remember specifically, but there's there is criteria on the plan. Certain composting material and there's maintenance and operation notes that it has to be uh inspected and maintained and there's actually the O and M agreement, the operation and maintenance agreement is part of the recorded MPDS permit. So that is, the MPDS is a state permit uh that's kind of regulated by the county and is part of the township plan approvals as well. So uh, there's there's several layers of of uh policing, if you will, to make sure it's installed, maintained and all that sort of thing.
So the, thanks for that. So the storm, that that the green roof itself, the maintenance of it, to make sure it's structurally sound or it's still doing what it's supposed to do is part of county oversight. Is that what I'm hearing you say?
Well, there's an operation and maintenance responsibility of the landowner. And then they've got to notify the county and the county has the right and the the ability to come in and inspect and make sure that everything is up to snuff. And the township does as well.
Yeah, and so and that's my second point. Maybe this is to Kristen, given that this is a planted area and it's part of the design, would this, would the green roof itself be part of the landscape plan that, you know, Ray would have potentially inspection oversight over to make sure that they're complying with?
Not from a lan- not from the landscaping plan, but from the permitting, the stormwater management required for this site contemplated that the roof was green and there is a stormwater management operations and maintenance agreement that gets recorded in the chain of title and it requires that the property owner continue to maintain all stormwater management facilities, which will include the green roof.
Okay, thank, thank you. I I'm sorry, I have like just two more questions. I know it's been a lot, I, um, I'm sure the board is ready to move on, but just two more quick questions. How does the stormwater work within the parking lot facility itself? Where, what is the drainage basin for that?
That's up in, on, on, I don't know if you're seeing the same screen, we are, I assume you are, it's the upper left corner, which is that lighter green area. There's the storm drainage system that goes up to that northeast corner.
Okay, so it's draining away from the stream?
Correct. Now, the
Okay.
Parking lot to the south of the stream has a detention basin that that kind of square underneath the parking area there. It's a subsurface bed that will discharge into the tributary.
Okay. And then my last thing, I mean, you've talked about wanting to build a relationship. I think you said this. I'm not trying to put words in you about building a good relationship with the community that you, this will be a service to count. So just kind of as a good, because we talked, or you've talked a lot about landscaping tonight. So I was just curious, you know, as a good gesture to the township, if the 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 developer would be or the applicant be willing to voluntarily commit themselves to only using native plants as part of their landscape?
I believe the landscape plan was approved by the township and I believe they've got specific criteria with what that that they have to use native species. So there is a specific landscape plan that was approved as part of the land development.
Can you hear me now?
Oh, yes, Cheryl. That's right. Yeah, we have Brett online, uh, so
Yes.
With Brett, so we can move on to Cheryl.
So, yeah, so I just wanted to make sure I understood you. I understood that you have a landscape plan, but I guess what I'm asking you, are you that may require, I don't know if we as a township have a native species requirement. I know that we have certain within the current, um, the ordinance, it looks at, you know, various types of trees that are appropriate for various circumstances. Some of those within the current ordinance are invasive species. So simply saying that you're going to comply with what's in that doesn't mean that you would be using native plants. I'm asking if you will, of those that you are selecting out of your landscape plan, only choose native species. And and again, that would be you voluntarily committing to that or not. I'm, I
Brett, can I interrupt you real quick?
Yeah, sure.
Unless the board approves a modification, he's required by law to install the landscaping that's on the approved landscaping plan.
And that includes
He can't just voluntarily agree to do that without the Board of Commissioners agreeing to revise the landscaping plan.
So Kristen, maybe, maybe I misunderstood and I apologize. That that includes specific species?
Yes.
It does?
It's down to the exact shrub name and shrub location and shrub number. It's very, very specific.
Okay, because I, we were just talking tonight about how they were going to install additional um evergreen species along that, which my understanding isn't already part of the landscape plan.
Right, those were additional ones that he was offering to help the neighbors. So that's over and above what the landscaping plan required.
Okay, but the landscape plan is already finalized then?
It's part of the approved plan and it's part of what the conversation is tonight as to whether the board agrees to continue that vesting, but I'll tell you that the landscaping requirements have not changed since this plan was filed. So even if he was to, if the board rejected the request to extend the vesting period, the landscaping requirements have not changed. So he would be putting forth the same exact landscaping plan because that's what comports with the ordinance.
And and if I can explain this, um, I'm, this is Scott Rispin. Um, I I am earth care landscaping and we do landscaping sites like this every single day. And it's it's always a common practice that we never try to put anything invasive so that if that if that helps you all.
Okay, it does. No, and I appreciate the explanation. Thanks, Kristen, and 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 thank you as well. That's it for me. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much, Brett.
Thank you.
We do have Cheryl. Cheryl, uh, we did hear you last time around, so come on.
Can you hear me now?
Yes. Yes, welcome.
Good, I don't know what that was all about. Um.
Name and address.
We've talked a lot about the water, so I won't belabor all of that except to make two comments. The first is
Yes.
The first is, um, we are hey, it's feeding back. Can you hear me?
Yes, we hear you and you're not feeding back on this end.
You were cutting in and out, but go ahead.
Okay. I've had a lot of old plans come back. We know that you have limitations on what you can do about that.
You're cutting in and out.
Cutting in.
You there?
Yeah, um, with regard to the water, the lawyer said that the water, the stormwater would be as good as it can be. And it's not the same as saying it meets the new county.
I think we can put together her her question.
I think the, I think the point, though, is that they haven't designed it yet to meet the the new ordinance. So she, they don't know for sure. I mean, he's looked at it, but if that's what the board wants them to do, they're going to have to do their best. And if they need waivers, they'll have to ask and it'll be a board decision. So, but they haven't fully designed it to meet the twenty twenty-two ordinance yet.
We have to go back and reevaluate it, what the differences are. But, but I
My second
Hold up there Cheryl, I'm sorry. Continue.
I was going to say, I think we meet the the major that we still will be, like I said, the infiltration, it doesn't infiltrate today, it's not going to infiltrate tomorrow. So you know, we know that as a specific requirement will need to be waived. Um, and there are other things that we do, green roof, uh, rain guards, things like that, which have been designed with the previous go around. So I suspect we'll be able to come up and work something out with the township engineer to satisfy it.
All right, Cheryl.
My second issue, which I would like to bring up because no one has really talked about it, is we keep using
Last year. Using
Fifty-five year olds. That building, that building will have as many as a hundred senior people in an elevator building or stories high in the event of a major flood, it's it's going to be bad. Those people can be immobile.
Is it just one elevator? Oh, it's not even designed.
It hasn't been designed yet, but we will have to meet the criteria of the township and the building code.
Okay. All right, good point there Cheryl.
Thank you.
Thank you. Others, hands raised? We have one more? Oh, we have two here. Kathy, you had your hand up first, come on up.
Heads up, we're in the middle of page one of a three-page agenda.
I promise.
Well, there is no pressure.
Two seconds. Kathy Callahan.
Got open their business in the morning and they're waiting for things, so.
Nine thirty-one Bonzo Road, Kathy Callahan. I am happy that Mary sitting here said that she also heard, she let me say this, she also heard it was a done deal. Now, I, you can call me weird, call me crazy, call me a pain in the neck, but nobody's ever going to call me a liar. So if we both heard it, but maybe you meant it to something else, but I know we heard.
It doesn't matter.
Well, it's a done deal and maybe it was out of frustration. That meeting probably went on long too. But I will be called everything, but I won't. So.
We have one more question?
Hello, my name is Bob Fernholtz. I'm at forty-eight Marshall Circle.
Hey, Bob.
How are you? I just have a question. I understand it's fifty-five and older, that's part of the plan. If the ownership of the property changes, does it still have to stay fifty-five?
Yes.
That's a requirement.
Because it's 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 how the use is defined.
Right.
So all that's permitted with this plan is a senior independent living facility, which is a defined term in the zoning ordinance. Doesn't matter who owns the land or who owns the building. It has to retain that use.
My understanding also is that the the it's, one of the reasons it's fifty-five and older is because there's only so much room for a parking lot. Fifty-five and older apartment buildings don't require as many parking spaces.
I think, I think it's the other way around.
The 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 building wasn't and the use wasn't designed around the parking lots, the other way around. The parking was designed based on the use of the building.
Time for me to take my medicine. All right. It's okay. Thank you very much. I better turn on
Thank you, Bob. All right. We have one, one more hand raised? Tony DiSario, come on up. A little closer to the mic.
Tony DiSario, two five one Loomis Avenue.
You said there's one point one parking spots? Per unit? And didn't we go through this before up to Willows? Mark? Well, I'm
It's a regular.
We're talking about the parking because yeah. Because most people at fifty-five are still working. Yeah, I'm just
They could be sixty-five, they could be seventy-five.
Seventy-five, seventy-four.
They could be walking the trails.
Not, no trail. I'm just, that's not very much parking, that's all I'm saying. I mean, you know, I was here when you come in and proposed the three floors. You had a new partner or something and, you know, I have no problem with the four floors, I'm not about that, but the parking is very shallow for that many people. And, you know, older people don't drive real good. That one point one is, you know, you're not going to get two cars in it. So I'm just bringing up
A good point, Tony, good point. Thank you.
Thank you.
No other questions? Kristen, why don't we, uh, we'll just kind of dwell on this. What do we have, thirty days, forty-five days? Oh, okay. I I think we asked enough questions. Thank you very much for your patience.
Thank you very much.
And your
Thank you all very much.
I'm a romantic. The rest of us slept for the next two hours.
Oh, where'd it come from? Oh, there you go.
Thank you.
Take care. Thank you. Gina, thank you.
That's not it under me. I don't know if you need me to stick around for anything else, the farmhouse question or anything else?
We already took care of the chief as well, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, have a good night. Next on the agenda, we have Gilmore and Associates. Oh, Ross, hey, welcome, Ross.
Good evening, good evening.
Where's that tie?
Yeah, it's, uh, it was choking me.
Uh, yeah, it's, uh, it was choking me, so I took it off. So for tonight, uh, for your consideration, uh, my first item here is, uh, for the Reed Street Drainage Improvements Project, uh, your consideration for payment application number seven in the amount of nineteen thousand, two hundred and thirty-nine dollars and twenty-eight cents payable to Forsyte Concepts, which is the contractor. Uh, they had a, a bit lighter of a work month out there because of the weather and there's not that much they have left to do before the paving. So that's why this is a much smaller pay app than typical for them.
All right. Questioners? Any questions on this?
Nope.
Clean cut. Residents, any questions here in the township building? Do not see any hands raised and any in Zoom. Well, entertain a motion to approve, what is this, application number seven in the amount of nineteen thousand, two hundred and thirty-nine dollars and twenty-eight cents payable to Forsyte Concepts for the Reed Street Drainage Improvement Program.
I'm of second.
Moved by Commissioner Evans, second by Commissioner Tindaro. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Motion's good, four zero.
Thank you. Yep, and my, my second item here is, uh, for your consideration, a change order number one from Gilmore Associates for the, uh, Spackman Davis Farmhouse Roof Project. Uh, and that's in the amount of six thousand, eight hundred dollars. And the purpose of that change order is, uh, relating back to our previous discussion about the, uh, when we were talking about the roofing materials, uh, you know, it came to light about the porch. There were some concerns about that structure pulling away from the actual farmhouse. Uh, so we are looking to add services to, for foundation design and the structural repairs for horizontal anchoring of the, uh, the porch into the main farmhouse structure. Our original scope of services was very much focused just on the actual roof replacement. So the, the foundation and those structural repairs were not in our original scope. So the purpose of this change order is to add the fees for the necessary, uh, drawings, calculations, and specifications that were not in our original scope, but would be needed now for this purpose. And they're all of a, sort of a, a different type, like different types of drawings and specs and calculations compared to what we originally had in scope.
Say he explained that very well.
The porch is pulling away and ripping the front of the house with it.
And let me ask you this.
Of the look of the house. So without the porch, you lose the kind of aesthetics of the farmhouse, I think.
Oh, I agree. Ross, let me just ask you this. Uh, you know, originally, we're just gonna, we're having the roof redone or putting it out to bid for that. Uh, can a roofing company deal with this structural, uh, work that'll be needed for the porch?
Hmm. I, I don't think so. I think we'll want to have a different contractor to make foundation repairs and these horizontal anchoring systems. So we'll definitely need to consider that when putting it out to bid. And it's something, I think, uh, certainly if the, if the lion's share of the work is roofing and we just have a few minor repairs, the, uh, the roofing companies could handle that by engaging a subcontractor to come in for that limited amount of work and have them do that ahead and then come through and do all the roofing replacements.
Would it also be an option to have, you know, put out the bid just the porch? Or, or do you think it would just, uh, increase our costs?
I think that for the small amount of work that it would be, I, it's, I think it's not gonna be a major construction effort. I think putting that out to bid, uh, I think that through the cost of having two separate solicitations that there would be a lot of time and effort spent on that that would pretty much balance out any of the, like a markup that would be on that subcontractor and just the hassle of then coordinating those two contracts and the possibility of them getting in each other's way and blaming the township. I, I think it'd be better to just have it under one contract.
He like looks into the future. You see that?
I like him.
That's why we like Ross.
No, I was going to say this, basically the same thing. I think fitting it together would probably be better.
Okay. All right. It's good. Uh, residents here in the township, any questions? Tony?
Tony DiSario, two five one Loomis Avenue. Uh, is this money from fundraisers to do this project?
Tony, this money is in the budget for.
Where's the budget? What do you mean the budget?
Improvement. And unfortunately, the solicitor just left. This is nothing new. There's nothing.
I'm just asking a question, cause it's, it's a change.
It's not a change.
We did budget.
We did budget.
For it.
Every year, there's money budgeted to improve the farm, and it hadn't been used until last year. So.
So it's already budgeted?
Yes.
For Josh. It's in the budget. Whether the bid comes in under what the budget is, that's where we'll have to figure out what to do if it comes over the budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Perfect.
Thanks, Tony. See, see Ross? He, he acts the same way here at this board.
Equal opportunity targets.
That's right. All right, uh, so no, no other questions here in the township? Any in Zoom? All right.
So moved.
There you go.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Evans, second by Commissioner Young. All in favor?
Aye, we're almost off page one.
Right. Cleared, what, four zero? Thank you, Ross.
Yep, and I think I'll stick around a little longer through, uh, Don's section as well.
All right.
Thank you, Ross.
Thank you.
Township manager. Don, what do we have?
Good evening, commissioners. Um, couple items here for this evening. Uh, the first is the property maintenance advertisement. This would be advertising the lawn maintenance for twenty twenty-four. Um, it's very similar announcement and the documentation as prior years updated to reflect current calendar year. Uh, in the past, it was, uh, early March, it would go out and advertise twice. The bid opening date would be Friday, March twenty-second at one P M. Uh, and then provided the bids that are received when opened are appropriate, it would come before the board at the last meeting in March.
So one quick question, and I'm trying to, unfortunately, on an iPad, it takes a minute to get to the, uh, section. But, um, we have on there alternatives for Ingleside Golf Course Basin. And I had that put in when Mr. Prant was manager, and he wouldn't tell the golf course manager to mow the basins. So I don't know that they really, that alternative needs to be in there because now we mow the basins, uh, with our own staff.
Yeah, and that, that came up before, and unfortunately, I, it, we just keep missing to remove it. It had been, uh, like Commissioner Young said, it had been an option for years.
Okay.
For all along, we could talk about forever about why.
Yeah.
We keep, unfortunately, and I apologize, we keep missing it to just remove it from there.
So like bid option seventeen, uh, bid option seventeen on our sheet is on there three times. Um, I think that could be stricken. Uh, what was put in the packet is bid sixteen is Amtrak right away, and then the next page is bid seventeen, bid seventeen, bid seventeen. I don't know why it's on there three times, but.
Yeah, and I, I thought we had gotten it out before, but it could be a typo. I didn't, I didn't see it. I apologize.
We can clean that up before it's. Yeah, I, I think you can strike that because Nicole is mowing the basin and it's not an issue anymore.
Excellent. Uh, Kathy? Kathy? Callahan? I, I don't mean to be rude, but I, I can actually hear you from all the way up here.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and it's, it's fine. If you wanna have a conversation, please just step outside, cause I know, you know, we, we have some folks in the back room.
Yeah.
Unless you're talking about us, and then, you know, feel free to take the mic.
Step on up to the microphone. Oh, my God.
That's right. Don't leave, don't leave. Just hang out there for a bit.
Now, thank you for that, for noticing that we'll make that change before it's done out.
Okay.
It's an action item. So moved.
Yes, it is. Well, we need to ask residents first. Commissioners, any questions?
Nope.
What are we on?
Uh, the lawn maintenance.
Okay.
Josh kind of ironed out a few things for us. Any questions here in the township building? None?
No.
Any in Zoom? Clean cut? All right, entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Evans, second by Commissioner Young. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Page two.
Motion passes four zero.
Okay, we'll get that out first thing after making that correction.
All right.
Next item, uh, three point two. We have a request from Farmhouse Coffee and Espresso Bar, uh, to waive the amended conditional use application fee. The application fee is set currently under the fee schedule at four thousand dollars for a conditional use application. This project was discussed previously. There was a request for a minor change to the approved conditional use, which, according to, uh, our solicitor, would require amended conditional use application to be filed and considered by the board. Uh, under the current fee schedule and ordinance, it requires the full fee be paid once again, and this is the request to waive that fee. Uh, a couple options were discussed, and, um, I, there is some flexibility from the board to consider waiving, modifying the, the request or the amount, or to require the fee in full.
Thanks.
Commissioners, uh, comments?
Well, you know, I had some lengthy ones before it got to be nine fifteen. When I was, uh, set, setting a platform for my reelection campaign in the fall, one of the things that I had written about was the inequity in our fee schedule here. And how it's really easy for the big chain to come in and do things, and it's really hard for the small business. So I started asking some questions. I started asking questions about how the fee schedule is set. It seems that an unconditional use is gotta be advertised, which costs maybe a thousand dollars. And then there's the legal review cost that our solicitor does. We're charging four thousand dollars flat rate. So something a little like this that our solicitor might spend an hour, two hours on. Should not be costing somebody four thousand dollars when a big project, like the one down at Bailey Road, we probably lost tens of thousand dollars in, in charges. But this is something over we need to look at. I think I, we really need to look at our fee schedule and make this, cause one size does not fit all with all developments. The cost of legal fees, uh, we're losing money on the big projects and breaking the bank of the small projects. So, um, you know, I, I, at this point, I want this, I, I, I want this, um, project to move forward. I, I think that at this point, we should consider waiving the fee. We're finding another option. This, 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 this business has been through enough. Get going. Two years, two and a half years?
We do have the applicant here, in case there's any direct questions. It's just, it's just modifying the conditional use to remove the brick from the, from the sidewalk. Is that correct?
I think this was.
Yeah.
Based on what Kristen and Pat said, that this is like the cleanest way for us to, for us to do it. I will say, I just wanna say something else. And this has been like on my mind a lot when I think about this. I almost feel like, I know that the conditional use part of our project had to get done before we got to the land development part. But being so new to this process in this township, I almost feel like if we would, if we would have gone through the land development piece first, I would have brought, I would have realized and brought this up before we even got to it. Cause it's now, it's like we're, we have to go backwards.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? So I think so early in the process with doing the conditional use for the drive-through, like that was the first thing that we did for this project, not really being able to dig in and see costs and see what, what does the site plan look like and what is. I mean, we've needed, I've needed a little bit of handholding with this because this project is way bigger and way more intense than, you know, building the farmhouse in the borough. So I think in hindsight, and again, I know we have a process here, but for me, it's almost like to rationalize it, doing the site plan before, you know, the conditional use for that drive-through, I feel like I would have brought this up. I keep saying to myself, I wish I would have like realized this and brought it up much sooner, but I think there was so much anxiety with getting that conditional use approved.
Yeah.
Um, that like I just didn't, it didn't even occur to me at that point until we started to really dig in. So I know we're kind of having to circle back, which is frustrating, but I think I would have gotten there a lot faster if the process was, you know.
I, and I think sometimes the, the benefit of the big guys is that they've done this before.
A million times, right?
You know, like a, a Wawa, this is like, they do this every single day.
Yeah, Starbucks, they probably have fifty that they're building in this region right now, and they have people that are staffed just to work on these things. So that is one of the, you know, disadvantages of being a small business in, you know, in a place where there's a lot of big businesses. Um, you know, it's, it's a lot of learning, so.
I, I think I tend to agree with Mark on the, maybe the moving forward, we move more towards a, um, escrow-type approach that, you know, cause I, I've said for years, you know, in some of these big projects that the conditional use lasts two years, you know, we probably do lose significant sums of money on that. Whereas, you know, this is probably gonna take a fifteen-minute hearing and, um, you know, we, we can, we can dig into that, and that's a good topic for our Lincoln Highway Group to bring back to the zoning.
Well, yeah.
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 Ray, I wanted, uh, to get your take on this. As far as this four thousand dollar, I mean, that's just a standard fee we have written in our.
Yeah, yeah, just to, not to belabor, but to give you a little bit of a background, when I, when I, uh, when I got promoted to handle the department, we did look, we did a pretty extensive review and change in the fee schedule. And back then, if I'm not mistaken, the conditional use fee was only like twenty-five hundred hours. So we recognized right away that for, for larger projects, we were losing a lot of money. But since then, besides the farmhouse project, I literally just had another small, uh, business owner that wants to do a project in the township, that same thing. I mean, going through some of these fees, because it's so small, is gonna break the back of, of that project. The manager and I, you know, have been discussing this pretty in-depth. And, and again, like Commissioner Young said, I think, uh, you know, uh, an escrow as opposed to a fee, you know, maybe an application fee to cover the cost of processing it, tracking, uh, materials down, uh, you know, very small, which we do for all permits. And an escrow is, is fair, like you guys said, all across the board. That way, if it's a large developer and it does cost us ten thousand dollars, they're paying ten thousand dollars. If it's a small developer and it's costing them two thousand dollars and they're only paying two thousand dollars, it, it literally does make sense. It just has never really come up before, to, to be quite honest. I know before we were losing tons of money. Um, but now, uh, you know, people have brought it up and it's, it's a very valid point. And to be honest with you, again, the conversation that we had, we could make that happen, you know, in next month. So it, it, to me, it wouldn't be inappropriate that, you know, to use this particular instance as a catalyst to make that happen. And, and as far as i- if your other point is, are we gonna lose money by not charging that fee in this particular case? The answer is no.
And, and you've paid this four thousand dollar bill before?
Yeah, I paid it, um, when we put in the application. I mean, that was a tough day. I sat here with Ray. I gave him quite a few checks for escrows and, you know, all of that. I think it worked out to be like twelve thousand dollars.
I was gonna say, it was over ten thousand dollars.
Was literally handing Ray the, the checks, like, here you go. Um, but yeah, we, we did. We, we, we paid it.
Yeah, there's, there's literally, for this particular case, there's literally almost no review. The only cost will be the solicitor to make sure that, to do the document, to amend the document. And, and again, that's.
And the advertisement?
And the advertisement. And again, we're talking a couple, you know, a few hundred hours.
And probably a court reporter as well.
Yeah, we will have to get a court reporter.
Thousand?
I mean, I guess the other way, and again, I, you know, I don't wanna. I mean, I guess the other way, and again, I, you know, I don't wanna put words in the commissioner's mouth or anyway, or put, put you in a bad position. I mean, the other way, maybe, uh, meet in the middle and ask if the applicant would be willing to pay the advertisement fee and the court reporter fee only.
I think, I, I mean, the, you paid four thousand was, was your first initial one? I bet we didn't use four thousand in the first one.
I, I wouldn't disagree with you.
I appreciate that. I appreciate all of your candidness.
Should consider the fact that she's already paid the four thousand.
Right, she's already paid it.
Use up the full amount.
And then I think we move forward with an escrow-based model for the future.
And again, that's what I mean, I mean, if, if, if this is the catalyst for that, you know, the manager and I certainly could, you know, do that probably next month, by next month. It's not that hard to make that change.
Excellent.
Dana, I, I gotta say, I'm very impressed. You have stopped this township from putting in brick. You have changed our fee schedules. I, I can't wait to see what else happens.
For the coffee.
Listen, I do wanna tell you, I really do wanna like genuinely thank all of you in this room from the bottom of my heart because I said, I saw Mark at the shop the other day and I said, you know, I just wanted to thank you. Thank all of you so much for the last meeting because I, I, like, I honestly felt so heard and the fact that you guys took all of my thoughts and, you know, everything that I said truly into consideration and are willing to make change is, it's just huge. So I've, I, I think it's, it's really just heartfelt to know that like there, there is a township that's willing to work with people, especially small business people and, um, I think that that means that there's a lot more to come for county township in regards to small business. So, thank you for being open-minded. And actionable, that's action. That's action, Ray.
Cowan doughnut.
There you go.
I think you should name one of the donuts or the pastries, the brick something.
Listen.
And maybe I'll add that to the conditional use.
You can put it in there, we'll, we'll do something, we really will. I'm all up for that.
And then you get your brick.
Yeah, then I get my brick.
Yeah, the Brick House or something.
Yes.
Yeah.
The brick.
Love it.
Brick House scone or something like that, you know?
No, don't get too crazy. We'll figure something out. But thank you.
Thank you.
Questions from residents? None here in the township building, any in Zoom? Entertain a motion to waive the amended conditional use application.
So moved.
Second.
By Commissioner Evans, second by Commissioner Tindaro, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion's good four zero, congratulations. Of course, we already got two thousand, the last four thousand out of you, so I think, I think we're breaking even. I think we're breaking even, so. It, it is.
I know.
When you're breaking ground. When you're breaking ground.
Then you break ground.
Good.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So much.
Take care.
All right, have a good night.
Good night.
Bye, good night.
Bye-bye.
All right, last on my list, commissioners is, um, this is associated with the 2024 road program, and I believe Ross from Gilmore indicated he was gonna be staying around in case there's any specific questions related to it. This is from uh, Gilmore, it's essentially, uh, in order to move forward with the road program, this allows for uh, mapping field assessment, preparing the bid documents, all the, the work associated with determining which roads will be selected and, uh, advanced in that road program. Cost, the cost associated for that work is not to exceed twenty-nine thousand six hundred and seventy.
Commissioners, any questions?
Can, go ahead. I was gonna say, can we commit to having this done quickly so that we're not in October paving roads again?
Yeah.
Allow Ross to.
Uh, yes, yeah, we can, um, get on this quickly and get the specs together and, um, it will certainly coordinate all the dates with township staff. And we can try and, you know, if you would like to see that happen before October, we can try and make that happen.
I have a question, and, and this is something I should know the answer to, though, I'm embarrassed. But, uh, my neighbors on Lloyd Avenue, you know, that's not part of the paving program, but it's been all ripped apart by, Aqua. It's, i- is, is Aqua gonna come back and repave that road entirely? Cause it's bad.
They are required.
Excellent.
Yeah, but not, not entirely.
Did we?
So unfortunately, based on our ordinance, not the entire width of the road, but the entire road, yeah.
Do, did we waive, um, I know in the past with Pennsylvania American, we've waived road opening fees to get them to pave the whole road. Did we do that in this case?
Because this was not Pennsylvania American, it was Aqua. And Aqua does not play in the sandbox as well as Pennsylvania American.
Yeah.
I know we're being recorded, so I wanna be careful about how much more is said about them.
I just know that Pennsylvania American was good to work with us and they would pave the whole.
They do, and they, they still do. As a matter of fact, Pennsylvania American is, uh, during water main, besides on Lincoln Highway, they did it on Olive Street Extension, they're doing it on Harmony Street, and they're doing it on part of, uh, Foundry Street. And yes, we waive our fees and they pave the entire width of the road even if they don't have to.
Yes, I, I know, you know, Tom and Chris who are here, they live right on Lloyd, Mark DeYoung who's on Zoom, you know, he's gotta use Lloyd all the time. It, there's stretches where it's one side of the road, almost the entire lane, and then it's the other side of the road, almost the entire lane, and it's, the road was already in bad shape, so.
Yeah, no, they, they have to repair it. Unfortunately, they can't do that now, but once the project's done, they'll have to, what do you, whichever side it was on, they'll have to pave the, from the middle to the edge of the road on that side the entire way.
Glad the mic's up here. Exactly.
Is there, so, question then, i- is there, um, and Don, maybe you, uh, you have a connection with uh, somebody at the state level that would be somebody from Aqua, can we get ahold of them and see if, if, uh, we can coordinate and get the whole road paved?
We can certainly try, be more than happy to reach out, um, and if, if the road opening fee was required in this case, that, we could also, and then with the, uh, professional, we can look to see what the road program looks like. Um, and what other roads are required, but there's certainly options available to explore to see if the, it, it can be addressed.
I know, we, we started the Pennsylvania American because I, I was lucky enough at the point in time, my, my, uh, great uncle was a lobbyist for Verizon, who got me in touch with the lobbyist for Pennsylvania American. And that's how this whole road program, or road being paved actually came to fruition. Because I, I was able to get to somebody at the top that was able to, um, uh, get in touch with somebody at Pennsylvania American, and we worked out this agreement. Um, and that's how that started. But, um, so I'm just not sure whether we can get to somebody at the top, you know, through our legislatures or somebody like that, um, to get people on the same page that, you know, we, we need the road, we want the road fully paved and not half paved.
I can certainly make, uh, make some outreach and see if we can start those conversations.
Even if we have to contribute to that, you know, um, we could, we could make that happen if we need to.
Does we have a hand raised here in the township?
Uh, Tom Parr, five eighty-two Lloyd Avenue. Where they stopped or started is in front of Copeland Academy. It goes down on the east side, down to Beaver Run Road, then jogs across the street. It goes from Beaver Run Road down my side, or westbound, if you wanna call it that. Crosses over, well, still, Ray, remember I asked you about, they, they didn't do Geo Carlson either.
Not, not yet, but again, they'll be there for another three months.
Okay, and, and Beaver Run, they, they didn't connect that together yet either. Then they went around the corner, and then they went in front of the Park and Serve, or Park and, uh, Park and Drive.
Park and Run, yep.
All the way around.
Park and Drive, Park and Serve, um, and then they're gonna cross over Lloyd again to cross over three twenty-two. How in the heck are they gonna do half of the road to Beaver Run and then cross over and do our half all the way around? And then do the other half in front of, uh, three twenty-two? That's ridiculous. That's idiotic. So, yeah, I know. That's it, thank you.
You can work, you can use the word stink. How's that?
How about stink?
Stink, okay.
I've learned something important tonight. The last time I only get a sixteen ounce coffee.
Wired.
I need more.
I did see a hand raised? Just Mark.
Thank you, um, Mark DeYoung, be twenty Beaver Run Road. I would really, uh, appreciate them paving that road, cause all new cars I'm finding out, I, are sold with low-profile tires. I seem to go through tires like I go through water. So, I was at the dealership the other, get to the store, I get my car inspected, and all sedans and things like that have these low-profile tires. So it's not, you hit a, a baby pothole and you could put a bubble in your side of your tire, so.
And you can dent the rim.
Yeah, I saw that.
Bought a few rims myself, too, yep.
I, it's, yeah, um, one day I was actually on the way to an event, and I was traveling down when two O two was under construction, and I got a flat tire, same thing, I got pulled outside the road, and I had to be late for the event. And one of the other people who was attending with me said, oh yeah, I heard about you on KYW. Yeah, that was me on the side of the road with a flat tire. So, I'm tired of paying for tires.
Yep. All right, Mark, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, uh, the one question, the road program, it, it's just for this year's road, uh, roads, what we're going to repave? And the five-year plan is up, right? So are we looking for new roads to repave?
That, that was a different PSA, so.
Okay.
Yep, so, so Ross, uh, we had Ross at Gilmore do an evaluation.
Oh, they've already done that?
Yes.
Okay, so out of that, we have the next round, okay.
Yep, and then it'll, you know, continue on till we get through those roads. And, and again, just, I mean, it might be worth noting, it's not just that, like, i- if, if Public Works finds a road or there's an issue, you know, we can bump that up in the rotation depending on the situation. But at least that evaluation that Gilmore did gives us the, you know, this is what the road looked like, this is where it should be in the priority, and that's kinda the guide that we've, you know, that you guys developed, you know, quite a few years, again, five years ago, and it worked very well, at least, um, you know, until we got through that list.
Yep. Safe to say.
And I, I'm done talking about roads, it's actually Mr. Huggins' responsibility.
Dan, you had a question? Come on up.
Is there a, a list of what roads then are on that program?
Well, there's, there's, so, there's an overall list that would be public record, and that list, every road in town and township can give it an evaluation of the condition of it and, uh, about a number rating on, you know, one to fi- I think it's one to five or one to ten. Um, we try to use that list. Again, then, the, this next step is to look at that list, plus anything Public Works has found that may have happened, uh, from a water main break or, you know, so- something else that went wrong that needs that bumped up on the list. That's what they're getting ready to do now is to develop that list. Once that list is developed, it'll come back to the board for an approval. Hey, we have this many roads, we got, uh, probable costs, this is what it's gonna cost. That would be public record once that list is developed, if that makes sense.
Can I interject? The road condition evaluation is on the website, um, so, so the big long list, yeah.
Perfect.
Yeah, so you can read it, it's cool.
Happy, thank you. It's online. Welcome back, Jane, hope you're feeling better. All right, so if there's no other questions, entertain a motion. Okay, I don't even need to read it. Moved by Commissioner Evans, second by Commissioner Young, all in favor? Say aye.
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 There you go, Jane, okay. Motion passes five zero. Thank you. All right, uh, let's go quick here, uh, board minutes to approve, we have three, three meetings worth, January eleventh. Any questions? If not, entertain a motion. Moved, moved by Commissioner Evans, second by Commissioner Tindaro, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Motion's good five zero. Uh, minutes for January twenty-fifth. Any, uh, changes, corrections? If not, entertain a motion. Moved by Commissioner Young.
Second.
By Commissioner Tindaro, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Good five zero. Last one, February eighth. Thing. Moved by Commissioner Evans, second by Commissioner Young, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
All the minutes have been approved. Uh, resolutions, what we have here. Establishing the twenty twenty-four fire police officers for the Thorndale Volunteer Fire Company. Uh, commissioners, had a chance to take a look at the list? Any questions?
No.
Not? Entertain a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero three, establishing the twenty twenty-four fire police officers.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Evans, second by Commissioner Tindaro, all in favor? Say aye.
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 Five zero. We already took care of five two. Five three, resolution twenty twenty-four, supporting the Pennsylvania Commission for the United States semi-quinsential. Let me try to get that out. No, I was winging it.
So moved.
All right, uh, well, it, uh, questions from residents? The commissioners are pretty excited about this, questions from residents as far as what this is. Commissioner Evans is here to explain if needed. You got a brief explanation? If he can, thirty seconds.
I need less, it, you know, the July fourth, twenty twenty-six is going to be the two-hundred-and-fiftieth birthday of this country. And there's a lot of wonderful things being planned nationwide, statewide, countywide, and locally. The counties cooking some great things up that we'll be involved in, and all townships have been asked to sign on in support of the mission of the America Two Fifty P A Semi-Quintennial, uh, that's it.
There you go.
I get under thirty?
America's been alive for two-hundred-and-fifty, well, almost.
Almost, we're not there.
Knock on wood.
Hanging in.
Somebody get, yeah, somebody got my joke. No hands raised here in the township building, any in Zoom? Entertain a motion to approve.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Evans, second by Commissioner Young, with an exciting, uh, third by Commissioner Tindaro, all in favor? Say aye.
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 Finance Department, what's the report, Lisa? We got some money and we spent some money?
Got it, and we can spend it, absolutely. We're right on track, uh, this year so far, eight percent, uh, of the revenues collected overall with eight percent of the budget expended, so we're right on, uh, right on the money there. Um, happy to report that our investing is still going great, uh, we've budgeted ninety-three thousand in interest this year, and our general fund uh, has already, uh, earned thirty-six thousand in January, um, February, I'm expecting another thirty-six to forty thousand. Um, and I will continue to, uh, diligently invest as long as the situation, uh, provides itself, uh, present. Obviously, everybody knows tax bills went out, um, reiterate and emphasize that two percent discount applies if paid or postmarked, uh, your payment by April thirtieth. Lot of ways to, uh, pay that bill, they are noted in the newsletter, which we have copies at the front desk, uh, also on the website, and I believe it was on socials as well, um, please feel free to call the Finance Department, uh, the prompt is number one when you call in, and we'd be more than happy to help, uh, answer any questions you have for that. Uh, tax and sewer bill, or the sewer and recycling bills also went out, um, March first, and, or will be going out March first if they haven't already, and that is for January and February payments. We have, uh, if I can make a plea to residents and property owners that are, um, wanting to pay right away, please check with your mortgage company to make sure that they are not paying the bill for you. Um, we had about one percent of all the total bills that went out, um, were duplicate payments. Uh, we don't want to see you spend more money than you need to, uh, it will take a lot of research for the Finance Department to review everything, review the payments, get the documentation, and then, uh, another couple of weeks to process a check so that you can be fully refunded, so just double-check that, um, help, help you out and help us out. That is all I have.
Excellent.
We're good. Information.
Thank you.
Any questions on, uh, financial report?
Just, just one quick one, uh, sorry, the state grant, is that from the, the, um, Reed Street project? Because we, okay, because we've already collected over a hundred percent of that, okay.
All right, and the check run, questions on the check? If not, entertain a motion to approve, uh, the check run fifty-one thousand five hundred and forty to fifty-one six thirty-nine, and a manual check of three hundred. Moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Young, second by Commissioner Tindaro, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion's good, five zero. Department heads, the meat and potatoes, uh, our police chief had to step out, so we can move on to the Thorndale Fire Company. Welcome, Patrick.
Good evening, had I known Commissioner Evans was gonna give my report, I could've stayed home. I'll have to coordinate better, but yeah, so, uh, obviously our fund drive did go out, thank you, we've received an overwhelming number of, uh, support back, uh, with more hitting our mailbox every day, so again, thank you to those who have donated. And of course, the blood drive on April the second, uh, thank you to, uh, Abby for getting that on the township website, as well as, uh, the newsletter, and I believe you sign up through the Red Cross site, but if you have any questions? How many? Well, that, that, okay, so, last week, we were at forty, so, that's great, so, thank you.
Excellent.
And, uh, that's kind of all I have, unless you have any questions, I'll keep it short and sweet.
Just how, how's the new situation with the paid firefighters?
Yeah, well, I don't want to steal race thunder, but, uh, yeah, so actually, uh, tomorrow will be one month of, um, the, when we enacted kind of the, the twenty-four hours during the week, uh, I, I think everything's been going very well. Uh, we've had a number of volunteers start to also stay, uh, anywhere from three to four nights a week at the firehouse as well, so, uh, we're, we're very pleased on both sides, um, and obviously, we couldn't do that without the support of the township, uh, community, business, uh, partners, as well as the commissioners, so, uh, we're there, ready to protect in any way that we can.
Patrick.
Thank you.
Building life and safety.
Uh, just a couple highlights, um, Chipotle opened, uh, the other day.
Woo!
So they're, they're rocking and rolling, actually, I know, uh, they've been busy since they did.
When I went by tonight, the line was out the door, and the, it was wrapped around the building with cars.
Yeah, so, a- and again, it is nice, it's not only, you know, keep in mind, it's not only people visiting, it, it's, uh, you know, it, it's jobs, too. So, um, so their, their Starbucks is not far behind them, I'm not sure when their planned opening date is, but they're getting close to done. And Duckling's Early Learning Center is app, uh, opening March eleventh. Um, so, all good things.
Is that a soft opening, Ray, or is that, or are they actually gonna bring?
They had a soft, uh, they had a soft opening on the twenty-eighth.
Okay.
And then now they're open, it, it wasn't much of a soft opening, basically, they opened and they just stayed open after that, yeah. Uh, they were a little bit behind schedule, so I think they would've done a little bit of a different way they opened, but they kind of did a soft opening on the twenty-eighth, and now they're, you know, rocking and rolling.
Thank you.
That's the daycare behind the Royal Farms?
Yes, that's correct, uh, yeah, they're opening March eleventh, and then they have a, uh, community Easter egg hunt that actually the fire company will probably participate in, um, you know, to do a static standby for the public kind of as an introduction, you know, here we are, so that's coming up as well. Uh, my place, actually, they have finally started renting out some of the townhomes, uh, so some of the townhomes are occupied. Uh, the first two apartment buildings are starting to get tenants in there. Um, Willows, again, the Willows actually fills up, you know, as soon as the buildings are done, so, uh, there's six, uh, residential buildings there, uh, or apartment buildings. Uh, the first three have multiple tenants, if not, uh, filled. And building five and six, which would be on the other side of the bridge, are getting close to, uh, getting final inspections. So, and my understanding is they have wait lists for both of those.
Great.
So, uh, some site work going on, you know, a Colonial Hyundai, um, you know, that continues. Couple other projects, uh, as of the, when I did this report, uh, the conditional use, uh, daycare on Zen Road, if you remember that, uh, Celebri School, we hadn't really heard anything, they just submitted a demo permit, so it looks like they're gonna get, you know, get their project started. Um, FEMA, uh, I don't know what to say about FEMA, but, um, I, I did, actually, there was a couple more questions, uh, two weeks ago that I was able to answer, and my understanding is it's in final review, uh, hopefully to get some money released, so we'll see where that goes. Uh, as the chief said, you know, the firefighter program's been, you know, running just fantastic. Again, it hasn't been just the volunteers and the career staff, we've had a lot of, you know, business support that we went to and, you know, asked for, uh, donations or just assistance to make the firehouse a little bit more, you know, suitable for people there twenty-four hours a day. And the businesses have been, you know, very positive, uh, with that as well. Um, working with the, uh, the township manager to, uh, make personnel, manual changes, and ordinance changes to acknowledge, uh, the program, uh, a bunch of changes there, hopefully we'll have a proposal to you here in near future. And working on the Civil Service Commission changes so that we can, uh, start advertising for full, you know, the two full-time positions we have open. Um, and then just working with EMS, you know, we have a multi-municipal committee, um, that myself, the manager, uh, Commissioner Young, and, you know, Commissioner Mullen have been sitting on to, to work with them, you know, as we continue to transition with that service.
Sorry, I have a, a question, uh, that maybe, uh, EMS might be better answering, but I'll throw it here. Apparently this week, there was a panic button, alarm set off at Copeland Run Academy on Lloyd. And the way had they had it set up, that the call went to the owner, uh, or the board president, and not to emergency services, and apparently Minquist did eventually, uh, they made a call and Minquist came out. I'm just wondering, who pays for that?
Pays for the response out? Nobody, and I'm not sure why they would call Minquist, it, I guess it would depend on, like, like there wasn't a fire department dispatcher, there wasn't an ambulance dispatch specifically, so I can't, I can't answer, unfortunately, I can't answer that. And as far as a panic alarm.
Could fall on the customer, they, they, they've got some issues going on over there, I won't say anymore.
Yeah, as far as a panic alarm, uh, that, that, they have a fire alarm su- system, and that use group really doesn't require a panic alarm per se, so I'm not, I'm not sure if that's part of their burglar alarm system, or?
It was just installed a couple weeks ago, like I said, when the, the, I think it's the board vice president approved it and had it put in. And then made his personal phone number the emergency number, so they had this.
Why?
That doesn't make sense.
I mean, that's.
There's a lot of things that don't make sense.
Panic button should go to the police department or nine-one-one.
Well, that's, that's why we have fire marshals, so I guess we'll have a fire marshal visit out there next week.
I have, I have customers that install them underneath the desk, so when they scoot in, they set it off.
Oh my god.
Yeah, they'll, they'll bang it with their knee.
Now, we'll def- we'll definitely look into that.
Thanks.
Point though. Hey, ooh, Public Works. Johnny, welcome.
You can have tomorrow off, Johnny.
We usually stay till midnight.
You too, Dennis.
Uh, just a couple of things, um, the Guy Row, South Calum Road has been installed, so residents that live up in that area would be, uh, happy that's installed and safe for road.
Awesome.
The other thing, um, is street sweeping that's coming up.
Yes.
So I did a little bit of research from the past, you know, experience that I had, you know, with dealing with the street sweeper contractors that come through our township, and, um, you know, I do believe that we've been wasting a lot of money and time with these people because the quality of work from the phone calls wasn't up to par for what we was putting out, so I did some research, and, um, I did find a company that's, um, a lot cheaper to, for us to rent a machine, we have enough personnel that we are hiring that can run the machine, and they know our roads and can do that job.
Excellent.
That's great.
My only question to that is, I think, before, would they haul away everything they swept, or would they dump it here?
They'd dump it and we'd haul it.
Okay, so you're, you're doing the work anyway?
We're doing the work anyway, and we know the roads, and I mean, it's like in the past. You know, I explained, I talked with Don and, you know, Ray and everybody, you know, they supposed to be here at seven o'clock, they don't show till ten o'clock, they leave at two o'clock, because they gotta get back to Jersey, or what, you know, Lancaster, so.
Yeah, wherever they're going.
I believe if we rent it for a month, we rent it for a month, our guys know our road, we know the community, I think we'd do a way better job.
Great idea.
Thank you.
Yep.
Now, do you have a schedule mapped out already? I mean, within a, a four-week period, do you, do, do you use it just two to three days out of the week?
Well, we have one guy constantly do it, you know, for a month, getting it done, because the way they got it structured is, um, it's eleven thousand, it's eleven thousand and some change for three weeks, but they give us the four-week ferry and a machine.
Okay.
Save a little, you know, save some money there.
We used to have a multi-municipal one, but that thing was.
That was terrible.
Yeah.
Well, wasn't it starting to cost us a lot of money maintenance all the time?
And everybody backed out of it, and I think we were left were the only ones paying for it.
Yeah, because, I mean, you get it from another municipality and it was broken and busted, and we have to fix it, and, you know, that was just downtime.
And I, I think I read, uh, between April fifteenth and May fifteenth?
Yes, April, yep.
And then that's usually the best time to sweep our streets?
Yep, don't get no crazy weather that time of year.
All right. Commissioners, uh, what do you think of this idea?
I love it.
I think it's great.
Who you putting in the truck?
I got several guys.
Yeah, he's the lucky person.
I got several guys, and it's not, it's a non-C D L truck.
Oh, really?
So the guys don't need a C D L for it.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, that's the nice part of the non-C D L, so, like, one of my guys, the guy that I'm thinking they'll want to do it, sick or something like that, somebody else can take the place.
Okay. Good. Residents, any questions? None here in the township building, any in Zoom? Don, you want it?
No, just, uh, want to thank, uh, Mr. Huggins for putting it together, it's gonna be a cost savings, and, uh, it's a great initiative, thank thank you for bringing it forward.
Yes, thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Not, not even two months on the job, he's saving us money.
Thank you, right.
I love it, I love it. All right, well, if there's no further questions, entertain a motion to approve the Bor- Vortex Industry Proposal.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Evans, second by Commissioner Tindaro, all in question, or all in favor, say aye.
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 Hey, motion's good, five zero. Thank you, Johnny. Minquist.
Minquist.
Good evening, uh, Matt Wagner, Assistant EMS Chief. So calls for the month four hundred and nine, uh, for the month of January, two hundred and thirty-three ALS, one hundred and seventy-six PLS, with a hundred and thirty-seven of them being in Calum Township. Transport destinations are a hundred and ninety-six Chester County, eighty-one to Paoli, three to Chopra, and then one to Phoenixville, one to Redding, and one to Dupont. Our average call times are down a little bit to seventy-nine, uh, seventy-two point nine, uh, minutes per call, with the top call types being, uh, ALS heart problems at seven, ALS respiratory at fifty-five, a basic fall at forty-five, and a sick person at forty-one. Recovered nine times, recovered other agencies thirty times.
Short and sweet.
Uh, and then as for that incident, I'm not familiar with it, I tried looking it up, but unfortunately, my phone died, so.
Do you think you could provide emergency services for all of us tonight?
Yeah, about ten fifteen, we're gonna feel faint. All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Uh, Ingleside Golf Course, do we have, uh, Nicole online?
Here she is.
Hello.
No, I don't see her.
She's on.
Is she?
Yeah.
Bring her up to panelist.
Hello.
Nicole, welcome.
Hello.
Thanks for coming, hey, did you see we're representing?
I see you guys, you guys look amazing.
Great place to go.
I have a golf club under the dais here.
All right, Nicole, what do you got for us?
Um, so far this year, it's been kind of snowy and rainy, so golf has been slow, but we've, uh, completed a bunch of projects on the golf course. Um, mostly, um, projects that are regarding the safety of our patrons, um. Those things are done like guardrails and bridges that aren't falling apart, um. The new golf carts are still awesome, and the membership loves them, and I think that helped us retain a good chunk of our members going into this year. Um, other than that, we're really just focusing on marketing, um, updating our logo, um, creating a newsletter, and, uh, getting some local advertisements on the radio, um, and a billboard, I think, I don't know, I sent over a billboard demo.
We did receive that.
Yes.
Looks wonderful.
Really does.
So that would be cool. Um, yeah, we're currently also hiring for just about every position at the golf course. Um, going into the season, we're gonna need more people. Um, and you guys are wearing some of the new merchandise, uh, that we've been getting in stock, which is nice. Um, and there's some new designs on some hats and stuff as well, so, just some fresh new stuff coming. Um, but it seems like, uh, the next week is gonna be warm, so golf is probably right around the corner. And we'll be too busy to do anything else but mo.
I like that.
Right.
Yeah, Commissioner, um, Kennedy, uh, had one comment earlier, uh, the Calum Township on, on the billboard. She was hoping to see that, I don't know, snap out a little bit more. Don't know if that's something that can be done, I, I love the billboard look, and we can talk about the logo in a second, too. But, uh, I don't know if that's doable, but she just brought it up, and I told her I would bring it up in case she wasn't online at the time.
Yeah, that's a tricky thing, the, when you're.
No, I appreciate that, I, I, I had designed the billboard, um, uh, without mentioning Calum Township at all, um, because I am rude, I don't, you know, but but it, it was brought to my attention that it- but it, it was brought to my attention that it should probably mention the township, so. So I quickly threw on a small, you know, I, Callan Township there. I do have this, like, the count, the township seal and the letterhead and stuff. I just, I'm doing it all myself, so the design work, and I just didn't have the time to, to do that last second. I mean, we were, they want to put it up next week.
A question for all, for all of us here, and this is just off the since we are starting to rebrand the new Thorndale Village Center. Do we want to call, say it's in Callan Township or in Thorndale?
Yeah, I'm on. I, I just thought too, also, because we have so many new residents, you know, and a lot of people travel on that corridor that they might not, you know, recognize that it's actually in Callan Township, it's not in Coatesville or Downey Town. Like, they'll see the Ingleside, but where is it actually located?
Right.
And then you, then Nicole, yeah, you do, you do us under the bus. In the grass, somewhere in the field, I saw it.
Yeah, we're in the trees.
Yeah, I said, there we go, down there in the grass, she's going to mow right over us.
I'm so sorry. I can do better, I promise.
No, it was just a thought. I was just thinking more not of, you know, that it wasn't there, but it would just appeal to some other people where it is, you know?
I agree. I do agree.
But it's beautiful. It is.
It, it truly is. Did an outstanding job.
Nicole's credit, I just was brought to your attention very, very late in the design process. The price had been raised earlier, so they'd have a very quick turnaround time to get something on here and to get it to the advertising company to get the proof back. So there was a clock ticking on that.
I love it. I love it.
So this is already said and, and ready to go.
I believe there still can be some changes made, but we'd have to make them very quickly. Nicole, I know you've been taking primary, you know, communication with Lamari Advertising. Are they still, they're still able to make?
Yeah, because this is the, this is the fourth or fifth version I've sent to them. So I've just made a lot of different options, and they critiqued my original designs, and then I adjusted it, and then they wanted to get it up by Monday, so I quickly put, wrote Callan Township at the bottom of it and sent it over, just, I'm sorry.
I know, I think you did an outstanding job.
And, and I believe that when this is seen on something the size of that screen, that that Callan Township will pop.
Probably, most likely, yes.
Thank you.
And Nicole, now you've already explained to Lorraine and myself about the new logo, but I would love for you to share what you did with this, because it, it looks, it looks outstanding.
Yeah, it does.
So what you're Jesus Christ.
Just a reminder, the meeting is being recorded.
You there, Nicole?
Yes, sorry. Um, yeah, the new logo. So I took the original logo because I wanted to incorporate it, of course, in, in the new logo. And I threw it on the flag, kind of how we have it, actually, on the golf course. That logo is on our flag with the black flagpole, so, and then I just kind of scripted out the, the club's name, and that logo is going to go on a few things, not very often on, on shirts.
Yeah, I love it. It's very fresh.
Yeah, it, it's, it's not that easily embroidered, embroiderable. But, uh, but it's good on, like, we'll get it, we're getting stickers for the carts. That'll be on the front of all the carts, and just is more sleek, and so that, the symbol in the flag was the original logo.
With the year, what year is it, nineteen sixty-two?
Sixty-two.
Perfect. You did a, you did a great job.
Great job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That'll make a nice postcard, too, for the, for the visitors.
We need to approve that? I like it.
Well, Nicole, any, anything else before we go for approval?
No, that's it.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, and I will ask residents if they have any questions before we approve this. New logo, it's exciting. None here at the township building, any in Zoom? All right, entertain a motion to approve the new like, club logo. Moved by Commissioner Evans, second by Commissioner Tindaro. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
We now have a new logo for our golf course. Thank you so much, Nicole. You're over and above the call of duty.
Yes, great job.
No problem.
Do we need to approve the billboard design? I mean, I'm all in on it.
Well, not an action item, it's.
Excellent, excellent.
Good. Additional business.
Where are we going for breakfast?
All right. Public comment at this time, any here in the township? No hands raised, any in Zoom? None, all right, entertain a motion for adjournment. Moved and second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned, thank you very much, everyone. Have a great night.
Good night.